Good evening. I am Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council's March 28th regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note that we may limit public comment speaker time depending on the number of speakers on any given item. At this time, I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor is participating remotely under Assembly Bill 2449 Just Cause. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor, can you please provide a general description of the circumstances related to the use of AB 2449 Just Cause?
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. I am using Just Cause because I am caring for a family member. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Other city council members present in the chambers tonight, we have council member Drew Combs, council member Maria Dorr, and council member Betsy Nash. Staff present tonight includes city manager Justin Murphy, city attorney Neera Doorty, and city clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. And again, echoing a welcome to our March 28th city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on any of tonight's agenda items, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and you can return it here at the clerk's desk. For those of you participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item you wish to speak on, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. I'd also like to announce that we are currently recruiting for all city advisory bodies. Recruitment is open through April 7th. More information can be found at menlopark.gov backslash commissions. That includes my introductions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. And just echoing our city clerk's notification of our advisory body recruitment, we encourage residents of all districts who are interested in all kinds of things to get involved in our city. It's really what we all make of it. So please consider joining a commission. We'll begin tonight's meeting with a gender review. A gender review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under city council member reports. Staff, as a note, staff will be providing an update to item F5, which is about the advisory body annual attendance report. So at this time, does the city council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? I'm not seeing any requests, so we are going to move on to our general public comment. Item E. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will be calling for public comment at the appropriate times for members of the public to address the city council on any item under our fixed agenda items sections. Those include presentations and proclamations, consent calendar, regular business, and informational items. So City Clerk Judy Heron, can we please now call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, for those of you participating in person, please feel free to complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If participating virtually, now's the time to engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine at this time. And our first speaker is Amin Ahmed.
Thank you. I live at 427 Bay Road, Menlo Park. My application to remove a redwood tree in my backyard has been denied on the account that it exposes low risk by the city arborists. I wanted to comment on a couple of items. One is the mistake that people use the word risk. And also in this context, but my background is I have a PhD in seismic engineering from UC Davis, and I work for a living as a risk modeler. So risk has two components. One is the occurrence of a hazard, the probability of a tree falling. The second one is the exposure. So the risk is the convolution of these two components. So what that means is if you have two trees, one of them is an eight-foot tree, one of them is a behemoth, eighty, ninety-foot tree. If it's assessed that the probability of their failure is similar, it doesn't mean that they have the same, they expose the people to the same risk. One of them is going to create a catastrophe if it fails. The other one is going to be a, just a, you know, a discomfort or something that people would just do a hand wave and pass by. So the redwood tree in our backyard has no place in that setting. It's a, it was planted, I suppose, by the first, I was told by the first owners back in 1950s, and now it has grown to be a huge, large tree. Over the years, because of the drought in the previous years, the top of the tree, you can see that the branches have withered and they are, they have been affected by the drought. We renovated the house back in 2017. And at that time, you know, we had to make some trenches, we had to do foundations. So we had, we, at that time, we took some photos of some of the roots that had been cut or, you know, in order to make room for the foundation. During the past three, four storms, the tree has dropped. We maintained the tree at least twice. Last time, two years ago, we thinned it out. We removed all the dead branches, but still it dropped healthy, green branches on our fence, on our roof. That is, so the part of the fence was destroyed. We repaired the fence. But my concern is the tree itself falling on the house. I asked city arborists, who's liable? If the tree falls on the house, is the city liable? Is the city responsible for providing the compensation for us? Or if it falls on the neighbor's house, are we liable for any damages that happens on the neighbors? Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, we only limit public comment to three minutes, but I think we understand the concern and the point you were making. We can't comment on it now because it's not on the agenda, but I know staff here is listening. Actually, city manager Murphy, is there any information you can provide?
So, yes, thank you. So I just wanted to say, I think we're all, we should be reasonable. We're all educated. We all know that human activity contributed to global warming. We know all that. I'm more than happy to compensate for any changes I make to the carbon footprint. But, but we also have to take into account that people want to live in a living, you know, free anxiety.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. City manager Murphy, was there any information you can provide or what's the process for residents? I believe city council has been receiving some emails as of late in general about people concerned about their trees. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, just specifically to this one, this individual, Mr. Amadi has applied and is going through a process, so that process needs to go through, so it's not subject to tonight. So then generally, yes, if people have concerns, they can express those to the city. They can apply for tree removals, but he's currently in a process, and so we should not interject in that this evening. But he does have appeal rights.
Okay, thank you, city manager Murphy, and thank you for your comment. City Clerk Heron, next comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no hands or further cards, Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you very much. So we are now going to move on to item E, which is presentations and proclamations. And our Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission, Tom Cabot, will be giving us a presentation on what his commission has been working on. Mr. Cabot, welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to share with you a little update on the recent activities of the Environmental Quality Commission. We meet monthly and try to produce environmentally interesting advice, scientifically-based advice for the council to move forward in making policy decisions. So we've got a seven-member body, and we've been meeting to work on things like review of the climate action plan. And what we've been seeing is that since council adopted the plan in 2020, 2021, we had the first six goals and staff have been working on those goals, but we haven't been able to add to them since then. So there's kind of a backlog of activities that the council and EQC may want to look into for how to get on track with meeting the 90% reduction in emissions by 2030 and 10% sequestration of emissions. So those things are ongoing. Also, we've been working in subcommittees, forming essentially a climate outreach subcommittee that has been going into the public and conducting meetings, having collaborative conversations to try to meet one of the council's directions that they had in August of 2021. They asked that more public outreach happened before they were ready to make climate policy about building electrification in particular. So we've been doing some background education activities, and you can read about those in the packet. We're trying to follow staff's direction to not be working too much on specific policy matters, but more on general background and providing information about the climate science and also information about ways to move forward and take advantage of incentive programs which have been growing all around us. So there's been, in the past year, a lot of activity around us where different organizations are putting together the financial incentives to help people move forward and make electrification affordable and more doable. So that is going on, and you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. Also, the Federal Inflation Reduction Act went into place, and it provides about a 10-year ramp of different federal incentives, including tax credits available right now and low-income and middle-income incentives available early next year. So lots of those things are happening. Also, we have a subcommittee looking at items related to the trees and the canopy, and they're working with city staff and with the local nonprofit canopy to explore grant funding opportunities for making an urban canopy master plan. What's the other activities? Well, we've been hearing a number of concerns from community members. So we take public comment also in our meetings and then get emails along the course of the month. There have been rising concerns. Many people are really noticing the climate change coming home to roost. We've had remarkable weather, just out of the ordinary. It appears everyone's getting somebody else's weather, and it's a bit much to deal with. So folks' concerns are raising about what's going on with climate change and about what's going on to work on it. And a number of citizens are coming forward to offer assistance and trying to see how they can help the city move forward. So we're also trying to incorporate their help into these little subcommittees that the EQC has to work on individual things. Then in the climate science sphere, the IPCC, Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, has been issuing reports, and they are becoming more dire as the evidence mounts. And one of the recent things they mentioned is that the existing fleet of fossil fire devices, run for just the rest of its regular life, is enough to push global warming to a two-degree rise, which is the limit that that body has set for beyond there. There's just too much danger. So the existing fleet has that much. And so they're asking that governments work on the programs and processes to quit installing more of those problems. So the EQC has been looking at how to do that and working with staff and essentially trying to help council take a look at that as well. But the implications are that there's a lot more action needed at the different places action can happen, and cities are in a great spot to help that happen at their level regarding buildings and access to electric vehicle charging. So Menlo Park's got a great climate ambitions and a great goal, a goal that would keep us at one and a half if we were able to achieve it, but we have been having a hard time getting the programs together to achieve it. So staff is working on that, and I believe they'll be bringing forward to you a study session where you'll be working on it as well. So lots of opportunities are happening. Lots of pressure is mounting in these areas. And the EQC has its traditional guidelines of its activities on its webpage. There are six items about trees and one item about other things, including climate preservation. But it looks like the EQC is very interested in talking with staff and council about updating those priorities so that the EQC can provide more environmental assistance to the city. So that's a basic recap of some recent events at the EQC, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Cabot, for that thorough yet brief presentation. I think each slide could probably have its own study session. So we appreciate you providing us the information and going over it so we could have a moment to absorb it. At this time, I think what we'll do is hear from public comment. So City Clerk Heron, can you please see if anyone would like to comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item E1, a presentation on the Environmental Quality Commission's chair report, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on item E1. And our first speaker will be Virginia Portillo.
Hello, thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering if you can go a little bit in-depth of the conservation planning that you guys are planning to do in regards to the climate change. Are we going to, I know you mentioned that we will be using a consulting company. Is there different ones or is there a particular one that you're using? I work closely with the stewardship for Serprens in Santa Cruz, and they work with a consulting company with Tom Robinson Consulting. So I'm just wondering if we're getting any data or information that can help us with the climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Katie Beruzzi.
Hi, council. Thank you so much, Katie Beruzzi. I serve on the Complete Streets Commission, but speaking for myself. And I really appreciate the work that the EQC have been doing. It's really impressive how hard they're all working. I am curious, I saw a couple of letters to council, and I wondered if staff could maybe comment if that would be appropriate on this topic about grants that the city could get to expedite solar planning. I think one of them was from one of our planning commissioners, but anyway, I just wanted to flag that because it seemed relevant to the topic at hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. And I have no further hands raised nor cards. So Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you. So thank you, Ms. Portillo and Ms. Beruzzi for your comments. And Mr. Cabot again, city manager Murphy, do you, I think, starting with the solar question, I believe council received two emails today about an opportunity to get some grant money to expedite solar permitting. I think that's what it was. Checking in if staff has seen that, thought about that, any information you can provide?
Yes, Mayor, I can say that staff has seen it. Staff is researching it and will follow up on the opportunity if it is applicable. So people are actively looking into that.
Thank you. And then Ms. Portillo had a question about, I believe, who we're working with on some of our climate data. If you have any comments about that, I know we have, yeah.
I personally don't, but if she wanted to follow up with us, we can get a little bit more context.
Okay, so Ms. Portillo, if you're still tuning in, feel free to send an email to city council or to city staff on maybe more specifics around what you were referring to. I think we all agree that we need good workers on climate here, but I think we need a little more clarity on your comment. So with that, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. If there are questions, comments, any discussion based on the information Mr. Cabot shared with us, and I also believe, just going back to Mr. Cabot's request from the commission, which was, I always look at the definition of what the EQC is and see, as Mr. Cabot mentioned, a lot of stuff about trees, which we all know are a big topic this few weeks. But if it's reflecting what our goal is of that commission in totality. So with that, if any of my colleagues want to kick it off.
I have a question right here. In this conversation, some of the slides you have talk about electrification as one of the activities that have been done. And I know there have also been questions that have been coming up from the public about the viability of gas appliances while there are outages or the viability of electric versus gas appliances. And I'm curious if you could provide some clarity for us on council to understand what's going on there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the question. So what happens in modern appliances is almost all modern gas furnaces that are in our larger homes that have central ducting, they will not work during a power outage because they don't have power to run the blowers to circulate the air or to blow the exhaust out into the neighborhood. And so they can't turn on and they can't ignite. So during power outages, it's in about 80, 83% to 85% of our homes don't have a furnace that'll work in a power outage. The buildings that have something that'll work during a power outage have the cheap kind of wall furnaces that don't have a fan. They just have a standing pilot light, and those would still work in an outage. And then most gas stoves can be lit with a match even during a power outage. But you know, that's kind of the extent of it. Oh, and gas tank water heaters, most gas tank water heaters can work if they're old style in a power outage. But new ones that meet the new construction energy requirements put out by the state, even before our reach code, they required efficiencies that took a blower and an igniter. And so those newer buildings don't have a working water heater during power outages either. So water heaters and furnaces tend to be the things that go out in power outages.
Thank you. Another question. I know we didn't get to look at the slide, but I know you have also included information here about incentives. And I'm curious if you could just briefly touch, based on what those incentives are and what that can mean. Thank you.
Right. So there are three levels of incentives right now. There are local incentives offered by Peninsula Clean Energy, which is the joint powers agency the city helped form. And those are amounting to about $3,000 for a heat pump water heater or $3,500 for a new heat pump. And a heat pump is a two-way air conditioner that can cool you in the summer or heat you in the winter by grabbing heat out of the breeze that blows through your yard. So there are roughly $3,000 incentives for each of those. And then another $1,000 from a nine-county regional area called Bayron. And so that's about $4,000 for each of those. And then each of those is also eligible for $2,000 tax credits for up to, you know, it's up to $2,000. It's 30% of all remaining costs. So those three layers of incentives are in place now. And then more are coming online provided by the federal IRA Inflation Reduction Act that will be implemented by the state energy offices. And that will come in 2024 for middle and low-income customers. And that's middle income goes up as high as about $207,000.
Thank you very much.
Other comments, questions from council members? Council member Nash.
So I just wanted to thank the EQC Commission. The folks there work so hard to help our city and our planet with climate action and with tree canopies and with many other issues, which I think are very important to the quality of life in Menlo Park and elsewhere. I am interested in finding out what it would take to make these changes to the roles and responsibilities of the EQC and whether any of other council members have comments on the revised roles and responsibilities. I am in support of the changes.
City manager Murphy, can you follow up on how do we go about changing that document or what have you?
Through the mayor, I might be able to assist in responding. This is not an action item. However, the city council can direct staff to return with an action item to modify the policy 23-004 related to commissions and committees updating the roles and responsibilities of the EQC, which will then be returned to the council for action.
And my understanding is that may be coming forward as part of some adjustments that are being made with the Finance and Audit Committee, so that might be an opportune time to do all of that work.
Correct. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. And just for clarity, so that item is going to come to the council automatically? Or do we need to support council member Nash's recommendation?
Yes, as long as there's, you know, a majority in favor of directing staff to do so, then we can do that. And I do believe I see a majority.
Okay.
When in person.
There are two thumbs up from council member Dorr and Mayor Wallison, and council member Nash already expressed her interest.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarity. I'm supportive. That is not why I have my hand up. I actually had a couple of questions regarding the presentation. And I also wanted to thank the EQC for their work supporting council policy and also supporting staff's recommendation. My question is, how are you capturing public input?
Yep. So through the community collaborative sessions, we're just taking notes. The subcommittee that is doing that, we're kind of operating as individuals, not representing the city during those meetings. But then we gather information and notes and bring it back and share it with the EQC in front of the Environmental Sustainability Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Cabot. So I can look at the notes, the minutes for the EQC to be able to take a glance at that. I'm just curious what folks are saying in Menlo Park.
Yeah, so we can make sure we can get that into the minutes.
Thank you.
Before council member Combs, did you have any comments or questions?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So I remember, and thank you for the presentation. It was, that was the fastest, like sort of, how many slides are here? Like 22-slide presentation. Like 22-slide presentation. I need to bring you to my job. I remember as it relates to, again, some of the issues surrounding the changes for natural gas appliances, that we were going to work to have like a sort of a sample case or test in Menlo Park, like that we were going to be involved in like trying to provide residents with actual sort of case studies. Did we, is that something I'm misremembering? Or did we make traction on that and I just didn't see it?
Through the Electrify Menlo Park program effort that's already started, there are a couple of low-income homes that have been retrofitted with electric heat pumps and I believe heat pump water heaters and maybe some solar installations. So those, some of those are going on as part of that program.
And do we have them as case studies on a website anywhere or that we documented? And also I'll sort of, because one of the things, I think it's great and you talk through the incentives. But the incentives, as you talk through them, don't provide me a clear sense of what the costs are. Like, right? So 10,000 is a great incentive if the cost is $10,000. But if the cost is something north of $10,000 or if we're looking at the transition for, you know, a 1,300-square-foot house in the Willows that's on knob and tube wiring, like, right? Like, that's where we get into, like, at least for me, understanding exactly what is going to be the impact to residents to this transition. And I, and yeah, I don't see it yet. Again, maybe that's my own just not seeing it. But I do remember vaguely that that being something that, for me, was going to be like an important to my own education and understanding this impact of like having those very specific case studies throughout the city.
And so I don't recall exactly what case studies the city would have been doing. But coincidentally, former Commissioner Josie Gaylord and myself were contractors to the County of San Mateo doing a study of 10 homes and making the electrification plans. And we have the case studies on 10 homes published. A lot of the results for low-income families are that the device is fully covered by rebates for, say, for water heaters. And but in almost all cases, the electrification device after incentives was cheaper than replacing it with another gas one. Because when your gas furnace fails, you don't have a free adventure. You're facing $6,000 or $7,000 in furnace replacement cost for the gas furnace. And then this other electrification thing may be 20,000 or so and then brought down to somewhere around that same cost.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. Again, I'll just go back. I do think we have to, like, as we have these issues, have like a fully transparent and unbiased discussion and presentation of them. And if not, I think that there becomes a sort of a loss of the city as being sort of unbiased in how it approaches this topic. Because again, yeah, if you're talking about a switch out of an electric appliance versus a gas-powered appliance, then if you're looking at it just based on that measure, then, yeah. But again, like I was saying, if you're on knob and tube wiring and you have to do that update and that update is $30,000, then that has to be factored in too. And I can promise you that return is not as quick, right? And so that's what I say. It's like, I think it's great. But again, we have to make sure that the city is presenting this in a way that the public can trust, that the city is being fully transparent about all of the ramifications. And I'll be frank, I don't know that I see that here. As we talk about this specific plan and this specific efforts. And I do, again, think that it's going to be, it's going to be necessary. Because there are other residents, when we have discussed this, have been very clear that like the city has not been transparent, right? And has not really understood what the full impacts are to residents and the full cost. And so again, like I said, I just think the extent to which we're going to proceed ahead in this direction, I think it's going to be important to happen.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely hear what you're saying. And when it comes time to present the case studies, I understand you're wanting to be sure we get a good apples-to-apples comparison of what does it cost to re-up with gas and what does it cost to go electric? And often, you know, with the issue of knob and tube wiring, we're not using the same wiring when electrifying a house. You're adding two or three new circuits and they're done with new wires to those new devices. People can keep their knob and tube wiring for their old things that they're still running on them.
Yeah, and that's, again, I know that there is some debate about like that and the impacts. And but yeah, I think that's, like I said, that's where I am in kind of understanding and wanting to, I think, fully understand the impact and to put the city and the EQC out there as like a trusted source when it comes to this topic.
Right. And tonight's just update on EQC activities was not really trying to be the case studies for electrification policy.
Yeah, no, totally. Councilmember Doran opened up this question and we then had discussions about the costs and rebates and what was available. And I do think it's important to point out, you mentioned a couple of times, you know, low income. But I want to see, like, just because you're not low-income does not mean you necessarily have $40,000 to make all the changes needed. If that's what the cost is, again, I don't know. I know what are the costs that I, the estimates that I got. But again, maybe I just look like someone who was, you know, someone you give high estimates to. So I won't share that. But again, like I say, I do think it's important that we're not looking at this from the framing of just a low-income perspective. Because again, like I say, that then doesn't present the case and the situation of most residents in Menlo Park. And so then that goes to, well, why aren't we saying that? Like, right? Why are we trying to frame this specifically in the scenario of a low-income situation?
Councilmember Combs, I appreciate your feedback. And as Mr. Cabot reminded us, this is kind of the EQC report. We will be having a study session specifically to electrification. And I think that your comments have, I mean, I'm listening to them. I would imagine Mr. Cabot is and staff is and.
But I just want to say, like, I went down this road because it was a road that, like I said, Councilmember Doran went down. And I thought it was important.
I think it was very helpful to hear your thoughts. Absolutely. I just wanted to remind the public that this item is an EQC commission update and that there will be a future item. This was in a moose bush of a large discussion, I think that's going to be taking place about electrification.
And I'll just say, to my earlier point, it's like what we share and what we don't. And so if we talk about the credits, but we don't then provide a full picture of what the cost might be, then we're framing it in a way that doesn't present us as an unbiased source.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran?
Yes, turning back to the existing EQC responsibilities and proposed EQC responsibilities, I just want to share my appreciation for the EQC, the thoughtful work and that you've continued to do over the years and that I see reflected in these four new priorities, readjusted priorities to match the priorities of what the city is working on with the Climate Action Plan, the needs and opportunities to advance climate adaptation, work on urban canopy and contribute to green and sustainable initiatives. And I'm not sure if we've seen up on screen, City Clerk, page E 1.11, which is the proposed new EQC plan. But really appreciate this outline and I'm really grateful for the work that you all are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Cabot, did you want to add anything?
Well, thank you so much. And just a quick plug for the community's putting together a We Love the Earth Festival, April 22nd, that'll happen at the Menlo Atherton School Campus. So that'll be another chance for the community to come together and engage in looking at environmental issues and how to make progress on them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cabot. We appreciate you and your commission with all this work and for coming here this evening. And we look forward to further conversations on some of the specifics in the future. And I believe Ms. Heron has direction also to bring back a modification item on your work plan charge. So with that, I think we are going to move on to our consent calendar, which is F, under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion, unless a city council member, city staff member or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, can you please provide the update on item F5?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. Did want to note that on attachment A for item F5, which is receiving and filing advisory body and city council annual attendance report, attachment A had the incorrect appointment dates for, at the time, city council members Williston and Taylor. It should be 2020 opposed to 2023. And that's my update. Thank you.
I believe that's for Mueller and Taylor. I'm sorry, Mueller and Williston.
Mueller and Williston, yes, thank you.
Thank you for catching that, City Clerk Karen. So we are now going to call for public comment on the consent calendar. City Clerk Karen?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on any of our consent calendar items, F1, city council meeting minutes. F2, the adoption of an ordinance amending Title 15 related to SB9. F3, a resolution approving the water service priority policy. F4, receiving and filing the investment portfolio for December of 2020, 2022. I think that's right. And then F5, receiving and file city council and advisory body attendance reports. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, F1 through F5. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So is there any council discussion on the consent calendar? Or does somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I would ask that F2 be removed from the consent calendar for a very brief discussion.
So it's to discuss it tonight, not to delay it to another?
No, I'm not necessarily asking for it. And just not asking for it to be delayed specifically. I just don't want to, yeah, it would just be great if it could be separated from the other consent calendar items, which I have no questions about.
Perfect. So are there any other items that folks would want to discuss? Should we go ahead and make a motion on items that we are not pulling for discussion?
I would make a motion to go ahead and approve F1, F3, F4, and F5.
Councilmember Taylor?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Doran and a second by Vice Mayor Taylor to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F2. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Doran.
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Williston.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, so I wanted the opportunity to not vote in favor of F2, which is why I asked that it be removed from the consent calendar. I was supportive of this at the last council meeting. After further thought, I became concerned about the parking reduction. And I had some concerns that, given that this is not something that has been rolled out fully, we don't completely yet understand the impacts of it. I was, my support would be more aligned with, as council, excuse me, as staff originally proposed it, which was that each unit required at least one parking spot, a location, and not the .5. And so in this case, again, if this lot results in two duplexes, under the count of the staff's original sketch of this plan, there would be four parking locations that needed to be identified. And under what we changed here, it would only be two. And I also want to make sure that that reduction, right, was in connection with any parcel in Menlo Park that became an SB9 urban lot split parcel and not necessarily parcels that were located in specific sort of transportation corridors or things. So like a lot or parcel in suburban park far away from any, you know, sort of mass transit corridor would not have, would only have to do like for four units, two parking spots.
Yes, thank you for the question. So that one parking space per unit would be for, specifically for SB9 developments. If a project was not being applied for under SB9, the typical single-family parking standards would apply, so two parking spaces per unit.
Yeah, but for SB9 as revised by council, now it's only a half a parking space, right?
Correct.
Which was different from as you, as staff originally proposed.
Correct.
And again, my concern, I'm all about sort of reducing parking requirements. And I think what like large multi-unit complexes, again, that makes a lot of sense because there's, in separating out rental, the rent from the, from parking or making it like a separate cost, I think is appropriate. But therein, there's a flexibility. Here you could have essentially, for me, four units develop and only two parking spots. And that means that the two units don't have parking spots. And in some neighborhoods of the city, that would be fine. But as I look at it broadly, I have concerns about like sort of a scenario where we're creating units that don't have parking spots in a suburban context, where we also don't allow overnight parking. And what the impacts of that will be. And I'll just share, and again, like I, my family, for what, like over 15 years, except for a brief period, has only had one car, right? Only one car down in Los Angeles. I got on the subway and rode the bus. And it's something I've been very proud of. But I also understand that there is a certain privilege and a certain luck that's connected with me being able to orient my life in a way and my wife in a way that we can only, we only have to rely on one car. I work very close. My wife works very close. But in this environment, I was thinking, what if I got laid off and my next job I found wasn't in Menlo Park, right? What if it was far away and I were in one of these units that doesn't have a parking spot? Like, what's, what do I do in that situation? And so this is something that, like, again, concerns me and why ultimately, again, like I would be more in line with staff's original recommendation here, original plan, which was one unit for one, one parking spot for one unit. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Councilmember Doran?
Yes, I really appreciate Councilmember Combs hearing from you and hearing your concerns about, your concerns and thoughts about the .5 per unit as opposed to the one per unit. And I suppose my concern with ratcheting back up is that it is creating more restrictions and it's creating inflexibility for homeowners who are separating their lot and creating more affordable housing for other community members to join Menlo Park. And by requiring them to add up to four units of parking is an unnecessary restriction. I think that we can let them choose if they want to add all those four lots, four parking lots. We can invite them just to add two or up to four if they want to. But I'm concerned about adding more restrictions when the state, you know, put down SB9 in the wholehearted hope to create more affordable housing. And if a homeowner decided that they were able to create units that didn't have a parking spot and maybe they were even more affordable because of that lack of a parking lot. and maybe they were even more affordable because of that lack of a parking spot. You know, as I mentioned previously, like I live with people who just bike, and it is a great fortune to bike. And just because you're able to bike doesn't mean that you're very well paid and can afford a really, you know, cer- certain life, lifestyle or certain apartments. But having access to a space that leans into that lifestyle, if that's the one you are able to or choose to live, I just don't see why we, uh, we'd want to create additional restrictions. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Williston. And I am actually supportive of councilmember Combs in this situation. Just speaking on behalf of my district, we have about 70% of the population commute out by vehicle to work or to school because of the public transportation. And I am concerned that we are going to create a standard that doesn't fit. It doesn't fit all of Menlo Park. And I have a question, knowing that we've had one application approved. Is that an affordable housing? Application? It, or do we know? Or do we have to wait until the units are actually built to find out if it's actually affordable?
Um, so speaking to the one that we've approved, to clarify, it was just a subdivision. We haven't seen an actual, you know, application to build housing units. In that case, since it would be below the five units needed to require affordable housing, the city wouldn't be able to require affordable housing. So it'd be, you know, up to the market or the, the homeowner in that case, what the rent is or sale price, what have you.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your answer. So we don't even know if SB nine is actually going to produce affordable housing. That's the hope.
We can't require it. I don't know if we know for sure if it, you know, will produce affordable housing, but we, the city can't require it.
Thank you. And I have one last question. And is, is there a way a year from now to assess the, the impacts of SB nine and parking? Or is that something that we were planning on doing? Or does the council need to request it?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
My, my question is, in a, a year from now, can we assess SB nine? And the impacts on our parking decision has had on Menlo Park? Is there a way to, to go back and look at? Is this a positive decision? Or has this impacted the projects in a negative way? Does that make sense? Can we measure what we decide? Is there a way to measure that in a year is my question?
It's a good question. Um, we'd have to think about it a little bit. We can, you know, certainly track in our permit system what projects are SB nine projects. I think it might be a little bit more difficult to quantify, you know, how imposing a half a parking space requirement or one parking space requirement, the impacts of that, I think we would need to do a little bit more, you know. We would have to think about that as staff has had to quantify that.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that response. Thank you. And I am still on the side of siding with councilmember Combs on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Um, councilmember Nash.
I just want to clarify that this is actually just allowing people to build less parking. It is not requiring them to. So what I am interested in learning as we are tracking as we get SB nine projects is what parking they choose, if in fact this is the, how much parking they put in. And if we didn't, well, I will just, how many projects, what their parking choices are and how that works. And if we, I'll stop there. Thank you.
So I appreciate my colleagues. I appreciate this discussion. You know, when SB nine passed, I was looking, I looked at it as an opportunity to open up new housing stock. It is a new law that, as has been stated before through the Turner Center, has not produced a ton of development, not only in Menlo Park, but throughout the state. So a lot of this is, has a big unknown. And I think we're going to see a lot of iterations. There's some new state laws around SB nine that are going to be coming through the legislature. So a lot of our nitty gritty decisions on some of these aspects of the ordinance might be moot in a couple of years anyway. With that, and this might surprise some of my colleagues, I would love for all of us to have the opportunity to vote yes on this. And I would be willing to forego the reduced parking requirement in the hopes that my colleagues would join the yes vote on SB nine. So I would be willing to go back to the state default on the one spot per unit, if that would entice my colleagues to.
So what I will say, like, again, I, I just want to share my, my concerns and respect wherever the council majority, or wherever the council lands. But if, if it defaults to the one parking spot per unit, then I will definitely vote for it.
Great. Um, with that, I'd actually like to make a motion to waive this, oh, actually staff. If my motion is to revert to the one parking space and to go back on what we had said earlier, how can I state the motion?
Thank you, mayor. I, I would just state the motion is drafted with the direction that the motion is amended to revert back to the one parking space per unit requirement that was presented at first reading, originally presented at first reading.
Thank you. So City Clerk Heron, my motion is what the city attorney just said. Thank you. So is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Williston, a second by city councilmember Combs to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title fifteen subdivisions and sixteen zoning of the Menlo Park municipal code in order to make regulations consistent with applicable California law regarding urban lot splits and two unit developments on single family zone parcels and reverting the parking requirement as presented in the first reading of one spot per unit. Any further city council?
Ms. Chow seems like she has something to say.
Thank you. The benefits of being in person. So I just wanted to clarify that there were some introduction, some modifications that staff introduced at the last meeting. Just want to clarify that those do carry over with the one parking space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow.
Thank you. So any further city council question or discussion?
I'll just say that I will be voting yes because I am excited about the opportunity to increase our housing stock in Menlo Park, housing of all affordabilities. And so excited to support this with the rest of city council. Thank you.
Thank you. So by roll call vote, city councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City councilmember Dower.
Yes.
City councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Williston.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And thanks again for councilmember Combs for pulling that one for discussion. We have now arrived at regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is G one. Consider an appeal of the complete streets commission approval to remove four on-street parking spaces at six sixty Roble Avenue. And to introduce this item is our senior transportation engineer, Kevin Chen. Mr. Chen.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Just wanted to mic check real quick to make sure that you guys can hear me okay.
Yes, go right ahead, Kevin.
Great, okay. I'm going to go ahead and start showing my screen so they can see my presentation. And Julie, if I can just have a quick confirmation that you're looking at the first page of my presentation in full screen mode.
Yep, you're all set.
Great, thank you very much. So good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Kevin Chan, senior transportation engineer with the City of Menlo Park Transportation Division. I'm very happy to be here with you tonight. Tonight, we're here to ask the city council to consider an appeal of a item that was previously went to our complete streets commission, which is regarding its parking, on-street parking removal for six sixty Roble Avenue. So for tonight's agenda, I will briefly go over the background, the project timeline that had happened to, to today, some of the evaluation that have taken place that really stemmed into the recommendation that we're presenting to you tonight. So here is a quick image of the, the driveway condition that we're looking at to kind of bring the city council up to date in terms of the project status. What we received previously, sometime last year, was a request from a resident that wanted staff to go out there and evaluate the site distance adequacy of the driveway that is serving six sixty Roble. Six sixty Roble is currently a building that is a multifamily building, serving approximately, I believe, eight, eight household, eight households. So it is a single serving driveway, meaning one way in, one way out, serving approximately eight families. And because of that request, staff went out there and did evaluations for the site distance, the site distance. Typically, what that means is staff will go out there, be at the driveway, and really evaluate the driveway from a driver perspective. So here you can see our two pictures if you were a driver that is coming out of that driveway. And here we are essentially looking, if you are a driver, you are essentially on the far edge of the sidewalk. Meaning if you were to put that in perspective of where the car would be, the front bumper right now would be approximately toward the edge of that parked vehicle right there. So that hopefully gives you a, a good picture of where, where the driver would be in this photo. So to your left, obviously, is the driver looking to your left, which would be towards Al Camino. And then the right picture is the driver looking to the right towards Curtis Avenue. So as you can see, right now, the, the driver would be pretty much looking at parked vehicles on both sides of the driveway without really a, a clear sight distance. Here is just a screen capture of some of the industry standards that we use to, to evaluate this type of request. Typically, when it comes to set distance evaluation, we want to look at the speed of the roadway. And we also wanted to, we wanted to look at where the drivers are, both from the main street, in this case, would be the driveway that's serving the, the building, as well as what we would consider to be kind of the major, in this case, would be, would be Roble. So in this way, in this case, Roble is considered to be 25 miles per hour. And therefore, using our industry standards, the minimum set distance is 155 feet. And to your right is a picture that gives you, you know, approximately what that set distance would be, what we're, what we're really evaluating in terms of sight distance. So just quickly go over the project timeline. Back in September 14 of 2022, staff brought this item to the complete streets commission, again, at the request of the resident to evaluate the driveway's site distance adequacy. Of course, there was very, very much discussions with some of the pros and cons and then some of the evaluation process that went in, which ultimately the complete ship commission voted to approve the request, which in this case would be the removal of on-street parking spaces. On September 22nd, the city received an official appeal from one, one of the residents on that block. And, and they, unfortunately, the appellant could not be here tonight. But I do want to just kind of bring your attention to the, sort of the statement that, that she made in her appeal letter, which also is attached as one of the attachments in the staff report. But generally speaking, I think the statement being made here is that, given the relative position of the driveway, which is more to the right of the building, the, the appellant believed that the parking spaces to the left doesn't really quite have the impact that staff had initially indicated. And then that would be kind of the reason for the appeal. Of course, with the appeal, we want to make sure that we, we do our due diligence. So we went out there again, looking at some of the numbers, just trying to see if there's anything else that we, we missed the first time around. And here is a, a quick illustration of the, the thought process that went behind it. As you can see, this is an exact illustration of Roble, the driveway that's serving six sixty. And as you can see, in order to achieve that minimum distance, which is 155 feet for a roadway that is signed at a, a pretty much fastest speed of 25 miles per hour, you, you kind of do need to remove those on-street parking spaces to, to kind of gain that, gain that sight visibility. So with that, our recommendation to you tonight is twofold. First is to deny the appeal that was brought forth by the appellant. And then second is to adopt the resolution to remove the parking spaces that staff indicated in the staff report as well. And before I conclude my presentation, I just wanted to make sure that I brought to your attention that we did receive two separate common letters from two separate residents. One was in, in opposition of the, of staff's recommendation to remove the parking spaces. And, and for, for fairly similar reasons stated from the appellant, given that the, the parking needs are quite high there. The, that particular resident doesn't believe that parking should be removed for that, for that reason. And then the second email that we received, while didn't explicit, didn't quite explicitly stated an opposition, there was some concern about if we were to remove parking spaces, what we, what, what you would do to the roadway width. And of course, with that, with that, if there was a desire to do a traffic calming measure, which I think most of you have probably read that comment as well. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chen. Before the council discusses this, we would first like to go to public comment. And I do want to acknowledge that we had, I believe, Mr. Chen, the emails you were referring to also came to CCIN, which is the council email log from, just so that the council is sure there's two emails and they both came from women named Carol. So I just want to make sure we know that there's two separate emails, because it might get a little confusing. So thank you for those that wrote in, and we'll now go to public comment. City Clerk Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Williston. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G one, consider an appeal of the complete streets commission's approval to remove four on-street parking spaces at six six zero Roble Avenue. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Carol Hyde, followed by John.
Honorable Mayor Williston and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to comment on the proposed removal of parking spaces on Roble Avenue. I am Carol Hyde.
Can you please bring the microphone a little closer to your mouth? Make sure everyone can hear you.
I'm Carol Hyde, longtime resident at six seven five Roble Avenue, right across the street from the parking spaces at issue. Residents at six seven five also find it quite dangerous to pull out onto Roble Avenue. So the issue is not just the parking that obscures the line of vision. It's also the speed of traffic racing along Roble. So I would ask that if you remove parking spaces, you create a more open street. And unless you install traffic calming measures, such as speed humps at the same a more open street, and unless you install traffic calming measures such as speed humps at the same time, traffic will assume even higher speeds. Cars race down Roble Avenue, trying to catch a green light at El Camino, pedal to the metal. Or they have been sitting on El Camino, waiting ages for the left arrow, and they are impatient, and they hurtle back in the other direction. Roble Avenue is more than a conduit for cars to get somewhere else. Roble is a residential neighborhood, habitat to families, people of all ages, toddlers, people on bicycles, dog walkers, wild animals, and pets. I have spoken with your very good people in the police and traffic departments. The police say they don't have the staffing to send to Roble Avenue any staff to ticket speeders. The traffic department requires a bureaucratic process that makes an incumbent on residents to get traffic humps installed. This is the document they send, trying to get through it. I'm not sure why it's up to residents to address public safety issues and initiate campaigns for traffic calming. If you are going to remove parking spaces and create a wider avenue, then really, the city needs to install permanent traffic calming measures, such as along Cambridge Avenue in multiple places, and even on the short one-block stretch of Crane Street, running between Menlo Avenue and Live Oak. Thank you for this opportunity to address this vexing and dangerous issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is John, followed by Katie Baruzzi.
Hi, this is John Ko. Thank you, City Council, for taking my comments. I would definitely echo Carol's comments. You know, I'm certainly sympathetic to the issues that six sixty has pulling out of their driveway. I represent the, there's an HOA of four units at six five three Roble. And we have the kind of fortunate controlled experiment of being directly across the street from six sixty. None of our residents have an issue pulling out. I do think what's different is a large tree in the building. And to be clear, what we mean by left side, I think what the appeal meant was the western side of El Camino. That doesn't have any obstruction. But the eastern side towards El Camino, I can understand how there can be issues, as evidenced by the picture in the presentation. But I think more broadly, you know, if we're going to address traffic issues and safety issues on Roble, I think traffic calming measures are certainly important. And at least for the residents of our HOA, one of the larger issues why a lot of us use the street parking, we've gotten special permits from the police department to do so after several damaging issues with trees on our property that, and it was a separate issue with the arborist and the heritage tree rules. But often, as we've had storms like this and in past years, we utilize those on-street parking permits to avoid damage to our cars. Unfortunately, we can't move our houses to avoid the same fate. But I think generally, I am supportive of parking removal. I think it's a little excessive, again, controlled experiment across the street. Four parking spaces is a lot to take away from that community in favor of removing some, but I'd also really like to see some traffic calming measures there as well if we go about that motion. Thank you for your time and look forward to the conversation.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Katie Baruzzi, followed by Carol Collins.
Hi, this is Katie Baruzzi from the Complete Streets Commission, speaking for myself, and I wanted to provide some context for how we were thinking about this. And basically, my sense is that this is some kind of legal requirement and that the city could be held liable if we are found not to be in compliance, and maybe staff can double-check my understanding of this. But it seems as though if somebody brings to our attention that we're out of compliance with a legal requirement for safety and we don't address it, then we have a liability issue on our hands. But I do feel very sympathetic to the issues raised by the previous two speakers. And I think since council is thinking about safe streets, that looking at some of these longer corridors without many obstructions that people do tend to tear down, holistically, it would be great. I'll also note that, I think one of the speakers mentioned this, but I definitely saw it in a letter and I saw it, you know, in Street View. And this is a pervasive problem in our community anyway. People are not doing a great job of maintaining their shrubberies and trees that also make visibility difficult. And finally, I'll say that when this came to Complete Streets, and there have been several of these recently, I think we've all expressed a little bit of frustration at something that Mr. Ko mentioned, which is that this is, and it's not staff's fault, I mean, they can't fix everything in the city all at once. But it feels a little unscientific right now, our approach, where we just sort of wait for people to bring us issues and do an NTP or something, instead of being more proactive and analyzing where the issues are, and then triaging and seeing, okay, well, where are the most accidents in the city if we have five places where people want to add speed bumps? Or, you know, which intersections, which of the five hundred intersections in our city that have inadequate sightlines are the ones that are actually causing real problems right now, and can we deal with this first? I am hopeful that when we get to the the traffic safety plan, the local traffic safety plan, that our Assistant Public Works Director has mentioned to you recently, that some of those kinds of more holistic issues can be addressed and that we can come up with some more proactive and efficient ways and equitable ways too, frankly, to make sure that issues around the city are being addressed in a timely manner. That said, again, we feel like it was, the onus was on the city once it had been elevated that we had a bad sightline issue to fix it, which is why we voted to remove the parking, as staff suggested. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Carol Collins, and this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G one.
Hi, hello, my name is Carol Collins, and I'm the other Carol, so I wanted to make sure you knew there were two Carols that did not support removing the parking in front of six sixty Roble. First off, they haven't solved their own sightline issue of removing a large bush that makes it so you cannot see through the cars anyway, going other driveway. And I do think you really need to consider the whole area for parking. It is a busy street, there's lots of parking overflow from the park, from downtown, and doing this one-off is incomplete. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comment. So our final speaker will be Tony Krumraine.
I want to thank everybody for their time. I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to add to some of the comments that you've already heard. My name is Tony Krumraine, I represent Cook Seafood at seven fifty-one El Camino. The real issue is that humongous cypress tree that blocks the site. If anybody's been out there, I've seen people walking their children in strollers almost get hit by cars coming out of there. I've seen, I mean, that's the real problem. I mean, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, there's codes in this city that address that, that no one has looked at. Chapter sixteen point six four, fences, walls, trees, and hedges. If you look at sixteen point six four point zero one zero, talks about the hedges and fences and so forth of non-residential districts, this would fall into that category. Item four says, clear lines of sight for vehicular and pedestrian traffic or other safety factors need to be considered. That is a very dangerous area, and that's really their site problem. The site problem is that it has nothing to do with those cars, like other people have mentioned. Because if you're going to remove cars from there, then everywhere in the city has the same problem. I mean, as you drive down that street, any other street, university, anywhere. I mean, as you heard from other people, John, I think, mentioned it, and when he was talking earlier, that there's no issue with pulling in and out of there, I mean, besides the speeding, which happens everywhere. But really, their issue is that massive cypress tree. And not only does it block the sight for those folks, and that's why they have to drive all the way out in the street to be able to turn, it actually encroaches on the sidewalk. If you go out there and look at it, it is two to three feet over on that sidewalk. And it's been that way for years. Now, if that was removed, or certainly following the code in the ordinance that says that it must not be that high, if it was cut down to a three-foot height, you're talking almost twelve feet from where that sidewalk is, where it encroaches back to the building next to them. If that wasn't there, they could be, they could see all the way to the street light there at El Camino. That's the real problem. So now, why I'm here is because we're already fighting every single day for people taking our parking spaces, because there's nowhere to park. There's nowhere to park. You guys already alluded to the fact that in this entire city, I mean, parking is diminishing. And people park on our lot every day that we got to run them off. You know, and it's only going to make that problem worse. There's nowhere for people to park. So I don't think that's the solution here, and I echo some of the other comments that these people made. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, because I wanted to hear what was going to happen, but I think it's a mistake to remove any spaces there. The first thing that needs to be done is to remove that massive tree. And again, the code calls for that. I mean, if we did the same thing on our driveway, pulling out onto that same street, if we allowed for these massive bushes to, I mean,
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And I'm seeing no further cards or hands. Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So at this time, City Clerk Karen, I sent you a photo. Can you please broadcast it on the screen? It's of the tree that has been referenced multiple times in discussion. I took that picture today when I went out there to check it out. And as you're pulling up the picture of the tree, I appreciate the commenter letting us know exactly where in the municipal code to search, that might have given some help to the city attorney and the city staff. So I would like to direct this question to the city attorney. What power, because I agree with the commenter and several of the commenters that when I went to check it out, that did seem to be a massive issue, that tree. So what power does the city have in terms of getting that cut back or addressed?
So we can look further into whether the city has code enforcement authority to remove or require the removal of the tree. Part of that determination, as you heard in public comment, may or may not come down to whether or not the tree is a tree or a hedge. And part of, part of the determination may come down to whether or not the tree or hedge in its current state could be considered a public nuisance. And we have not made a determination on either of those questions as of yet, but we certainly can look into it. I also think, I do want to turn it, if you're, through the mayor, if you're okay, to staff, because we did have a discussion earlier about whether or not that is a viable option for creating a greater safety in line of sight, and I think the staff might have a desire to weigh in on that.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Can I just one quickly about the, do we know whose parcel the tree is on? Like, is it, is it the apartment building, or is it the sort of commercial structures? Yeah. So, because I do, so that's the commercial, okay. Because in that, because in theory, those residents should have gone to the, but, to the owner of their apartment, but they didn't, because that tree is not, not theirs.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. So I'd love to hear staff's thoughts on this topic.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So yes, in terms of the cypress tree, certainly there is a sight issue with regard to pedestrians, which I believe one of the, one of the speakers spoke to about, which certainly is the topic of discussion, could be the topic of discussion. But given that the original request was about sight distance relative to cars driving up and down Roble versus cars that are trying to exit the driveway, the tree would essentially have no bearing in terms of, for that conversation, acknowledging that it does have a conversation. It could be a conversation with regard to pedestrians walking.
Wait, sorry, Mr. Chan, so you're saying the tree has no bearing on the site issues for vehicles exiting the complex?
That, that we were looking at, because, and if I can go ahead and share my screen with you, I think that would probably be a little bit clearer in terms of what I'm speaking about. So my apologies. So as you can see from here, this is, the driver in this case is well-passed through. The driver is now well-passed through. You are essentially kind of sitting right on top of the sidewalk, you know, the sidewalk portion of the driveway. And this is where you're looking at, looking left towards El Camino, right? So the tree in this case is not in play at all. But I do want to acknowledge that the tree does come into play relative to people that are walking on there on the sidewalk coming from El Camino, and if a car is coming out, you know, it's hard for them to see a pedestrian walking, which will address that.
So, so Mr. Chan, I think those of us on the dais are struggling a little bit here, because I think there's like engineering, and this is not directed at you personally. There's engineering guidelines that you have about where you measure the sight distance. And that's kind of, I think what we're all feeling, human behavior of where you want to look in terms of finding the site. I think many of us visited the site or have been looking at photos and whatnot, and we're feeling that this is a vehicular issue as well. Is there engineering judgment that can also go into sightline issues? Because it doesn't sync up to, I think, what we, at least I'm seeing some nods of what, what it feels like to us as, we get that it's a pedestrian sidewalk issue, but it does feel like it's also a vehicular issue.
Absolutely. And in this case, and maybe it's just that we're not quite, maybe I'm just misunderstanding kind of the vehicle issue that you are talking about in this case. So, so when we are doing that study, we're coming from the perspective of the driver. Right? So you typically, you know, no more than three and a half feet or four feet above ground when you're sitting in a car. So that's, that's kind of just going to get that out of the way. I would probably look at this from a perspective of someone, I'm sorry, just put on an image where I'm supposed to. I would, like, the best personal experience would be if you're coming to a stop sign, you are supposed to stop behind a stop bar first. Make sure that there's no pedestrians in the crosswalk. And if you can't see the road to your left or to the right, now you start encroaching into the crosswalk. And if you can't, still cannot see to your left or to your right, now you're encroaching more into the street until you are at a point where you felt safe enough to see cars coming from your left and your right to make that turn. So in this case, I would kind of consider that to be the same case. The cypress, the cypress tree would, I would equate that to maybe where the stop bar would be. And that's where the pedestrian question certainly is, something to be, to be worth discussing a little bit more. So you kind of get to the tree, obviously, you can't see what's to your left, now you encroach more further into the crosswalk, I'm sorry, into the sidewalk, still can't see anything, and now you are looking at the picture where I showed, I showed you earlier, where you are essentially kind of.
I think what we're going to, let's just say hypothetically for a minute, that the tree gets trimmed back quite a bit. Wouldn't there be, wouldn't the sightline appear earlier for the driver and make it better for the driver?
Not necessarily. It depends on how far back you want to see. Now, you might be able to see, as the, one of the, one of the speakers say, oh, you can see a signal at El Camino, which is certainly correct, but you still cannot see cars driving towards you. I don't know if that makes sense. I mean, you can see further out, but you're not seeing a car that's driving towards you within, say, a hundred fifty-five feet or so, because there's a line of cars parked on the street that's blocking your view. You can see maybe three hundred feet out, but you won't be able to see what's within, say, a hundred fifty-five feet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads on the dais. And again, this is not directed at Mr. Chan, this is engineering standard, so whatever comes at you right now is just us being curious. It looks like Vice Mayor Taylor has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and I'm not sure if this is a question more than more a comment. And that is, number one, it's And, and that is number one, it's obvious this tree needs to be trimmed. That's, that's obvious.
I agree, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Or so until that happens, it just, it, it doesn't make sense to do anything. This, that should be the first thing that's done. The second is, I agree with the two public commenters about looking at the whole area as opposed to doing these one offs. I'm not sure who brought this to Complete Streets to review. But I, I'm concerned about just coming and removing parking in order to give more visibility when there's one big issue, the tree around visibility. Not just the engineering, but also I can't imagine coming out and trying to make a left turn. So I probably wouldn't make a left turn. I'd make a right turn. But, um, so those are a couple of things to address, um, I, I think, just to kind of kick off the conversation. What I'm hoping is that this doesn't turn into an hour discussion.
Okay, that's fair. Um, Councilmember Door.
I'd like to ask our city attorney, um, given the, the engineering guidelines are, are, what kind of requirements do we have as a city to, uh, address this in the specific way that, but by removing the parking or anything, any details you can share that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Door. So there are guidelines and best practices here, but there's no mandatory legal obligation on the part of the city to remove the parking. Given the line of sight best practices that staff has articulated.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah. So do we, do we have to take action here? Can we just say, uh, send this back to staff to, to look at other mitigations? As it relates to this, the, the situation, I do want to say, and again, thank you again, Mr. Chen, um, for, for, for the presentation. Wha- what concerns me is that though, to some degree, the entirety of the Complete Streets Commission is seen as differently than what it seems as though the entirety of the city council. And that is, Mr. Chen is doing his job and, and I appreciate that. But that gives me a little bit more pause and concern. But I think to the Vice Mayor's point, uh, it's, I, I, I see lots of, lots of issues here. And I, I won't, I don't think it's worth digging in and, and I, I don't think we're going to move forward tonight with removing parking.
Yeah, I would venture to say it's not an elephant in the room. It's a hedge in the room. Ha ha. So to Councilmember Combs' point, uh, staff or city manager or city attorney, can we direct you to engage in whatever issue we've addressed on the dais tonight and then for this to return?
Sure. So there is an appeal before you. So the council does need to make a, a decision on the, on the appeal, which just relates to the removal of the parking. Separately from that, we have this issue of can we solve the problem through the hedge slash tree? And that you can certainly provide us direction on. But the hedge slash tree is not before you on appeal tonight.
I think what our question is, can we just delay the appeal question until we have had an opportunity to assess once the hedge issue has been addressed?
I, I, I will probably let the city manager address that legally. Yes, you can delay. You don't have to make a decision on the appeal tonight. You could continue it.
Okay, I see Vice Mayor Taylor and then Councilmember Combs.
Mayor Wilson, I'd, I'd love to hear from the city manager. He may answer what I was actually going to ask.
Fabulous. City Manager Murphy, did you want to jump in there? I apologize if I cut you off.
Let's see, I, I, thank you, Mary. I have no, no idea whether I will be answering the question that was about the ask, but I could speak to the earlier statement, I think.
So I, I'd actually like to make an, a motion to uphold the appeal. So that, that denies the parking removal because either way, if I'm, if I'm pulling out, the removal of the parking to the right makes absolutely no sense. Th- that situation exists hundreds of places in the city. And there is no logic in the staff report that I saw that made that make sense. And so seen, seen as though this is all one thing, then again, my, my motion is to uphold the appeal because under no circumstances would I ever be supportive of, of removing that parking unless we are then going to ask for an analysis of the hundreds of spots over across the city where that also exists and where we should remove that parking. So again, that, that would be my, my motion. And, and I think we can have a discussion about, again, pulling out the left-hand parking and about whether sightlines or visibility can be increased with, with, um, and it's a massive Italian Cypress trees. I have some little ones at my house and maybe in 50 years they'll look that nice. But, um, but we can, we can have a discussion about like that. But as it relates to, to all of the, the, the removal, that's, that, that's on the table here. Again, like I, I would move that, that we uphold the appeal.
So that's a motion on the floor. Okay. Is there more, uh, council discussion? Vice Mayor Taylor, we, we're going to go back to you.
I'll second.
So I, I just want to say that, um, the comments that were made this evening, kind of a little separate from the parking removal and sightline issue about traffic calming and about residents having to proactively ask for our community to be safe are, are well taken. I completely agree. We have actually asked staff to return to us with our, what's called our NTMP, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. I believe, at least for me, with the intent of making it much easier and allowing staff much more discretion to move forward with traffic calming in, in easier and faster ways. So that I believe is, um, on a future agenda. So stay tuned for that. But any other comments then before we go to a vote or staff, uh, city attorney, give any other comments you'd like to make?
Yeah. So, um, we have a resolution to deny the appeal before the council tonight. We would need to bring a resolution back, upholding the appeal based on the comments that the council provided tonight. Staff will redraft the resolution, bring it back with a, a holding of the appeal and then the council will vote on that.
Can, in the meantime, can staff potentially investigate what is possible regarding the hedge in question or tree or whatever the green thing is?
Uh, yes, the staff can investigate that. I don't know the exact timeline.
That's fair. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, uh, City Clerk Karen, I believe we're ready. Uh, Councilmember Combs?
But can we vote? Because you said that there is.
Right, we are not voting.
You're, you're not, but I, I think we have direct, well, I'll let the city clerk answer if she has the direction she needs to bring it back.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, City Attorney. I don't believe a motion is going to be required. We do have direction to redraft the resolution, upholding the appeal and directing staff to investigate the Cypress tree removal as time permits.
It could be a hedge. So.
Or hedge.
Hedge. Okay.
Shrub head greenery.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And thank you to members of the public for engaging on this topic. I hope you can see that we take your concerns very seriously and we're trying to come up with the best solution we can. So with that, we're actually going to take a short break right now. We'll take a break until 7:50, a seven-minute break, and then we will continue with our regular business items. So thank you.
Okay, having our city council back on our in-person and virtual days. Mayor Willison, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. We are moving on to G2, our next regular business item, which is to amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And to introduce this item, oh, exciting, is our new administrative services director, Brittany Mello. Welcome, Ms. Mello.
Hi, hello, thanks so much. Very much appreciate it. So I believe I'm sharing my screen, but this is my first time and it doesn't look like it is sharing. Let's double check. Pardon me. And is that working? Terrific. All right, thank you so much. So I am pleased to present the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget amendments for your consideration. As the council knows, the budget is a living document. So mid-year budget reviews are part of the standard budgeting process to account for changes authorized from various council actions throughout the year and to incorporate updated revenues and expenditures as new information becomes available. So staff will be providing a high-level overview for you tonight, and more detailed information is presented in the staff report and the various attachments. And so tonight's presentation will focus on the general fund, as it's the largest operating fund in the city. We'll take a look at the year-to-date activity, as well as the year-end forecast, and then we'll review the key budget amendments by department. So starting with the general fund, year-to-date activity, this is a snapshot of where the general fund was at as of December 31st, 2022. You'll see there is a temporary surplus of about 2.7 million, and this is primarily due to a higher vacancy rate than anticipated, with only 191 current full-time equivalents, or FTEs, versus 250 FTEs that were budgeted out of the general fund, as well as higher-than-expected investment earnings to date. This temporary surplus will be drawn down by the close of the fiscal year, as many revenues and expenses hit our books in the latter part of each fiscal year. And so the council can really think of this as a snapshot of when you look at your bank account after you received your paycheck, but before you have paid all your bills. For the fiscal year-end forecast for June 30th, 2023, we started the fiscal year with a budgeted deficit of 6.4 million and are currently projecting a deficit of just 15,000. This is primarily due to the higher-than-budgeted anticipated revenues of 1.6 million, as well as significant labor cost savings of 5.2 million. Of note, this forecast does incorporate the proposed mid-year budget amendments before you this evening. I also wanted to take a moment to highlight that we are anticipating future economic uncertainty, which may impact our forecasts as we head into the upcoming fiscal year 2023-24 budget cycle. And so on a national level, we have rising interest rates due to uncertainty in the financial markets. We have continued supply chain impacts and recent banking collapses with Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank, among many other factors. On a regional level, the technology industry has been experiencing turmoil, with Meta recently announcing a plan to lay off an additional 10,000 employees. And so this graph really is meant to help summarize the overall picture that we're forecasting a nearly balanced general fund at the end of the fiscal year, with 76.66 million in expenses, offset by 76.65 million in revenues, and that deficit almost completely disappearing with just 15,000 remaining. And so moving on to the general fund reserves, there are multiple impacts to the reserve levels, and those are shown in detail in Table 1 of the staff report. These include decreases to the project-related reserves from 1.5 million to 2.5 million due to the Menlo Park Atherton Education Foundation grant. The strategic pension reserve also decreases from 3.2 million to 2.2 million, with 1 million put towards reducing the unfunded accrued liability, or UAL, with CalPERS per previous council direction. Then, the economic stabilization reserve was adjusted from 16 million to 16.7 million, and that is in compliance with the reserve limits set by council priority or policy. And as a result of these movements between reserve components, the forecasted unassigned fund balance increases from 0.9 million to 2.1 million. And so next, we'll dive into the proposed mid-year budget amendments. And so the proposed amendments by department are summarized here on the slide and presented in detail in Attachment B, and presented by Fund in Attachment C. I'll be reviewing the primary drivers in each department at a high level, and then staff is happy to dive into any individual items further during the council discussion. For the non-departmental category, there is 5.5 million in revenue adjustments. The bulk of this amendment is related to the dispersment of 4.1 million in the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds from the federal government. It's important to note that the discussion regarding the use of ARPA funds will be brought back for city council consideration during the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget development process that will be taking place over the next few months. Staff is aware of the council's direction from their June 28th, 2022 meeting to dedicate a portion of these funds for residents of Menlo Park. And as a reminder, ARPA funds must be fully expended by December 31st, 2024. Additionally, in the non-departmental category, there is a proposed 1 million dispersment from the California Employers Retiree Benefit Trust, which is currently overfunded. These funds can only be put towards healthcare premiums. Oops. My apologies. Moving on to the city manager's office, the primary amendment is related to the 1 million Menlo Park Atherton Education Foundation grant, as well as the storm-related hotel reimbursements. For three of the departments you see on the screen, Administrative Services, Public Works, and the Police Department, there are proposed amendments that are related to overtime and temporary staffing budgets. As the council recalls from earlier in my presentation, there is higher-than-anticipated vacancy rate in city positions, which resulted in labor cost savings of 5.5 million. Since these departments had anticipated filling many of these positions, they did not budget for the additional overtime and temporary help expenses that would be needed to help meet all of our operational demands. And so these two items are directly related. We dive into the Library and Community Services Department. There are amendments to add expenses related to grants that the city has received for both Big Lift and the Bellhaven Child Development Center, as well as an appropriation for the Bellhaven Community Development Fund mini-grant program. For community development, this amendment is for cleanup of processing fees related to building permit payments that were not previously accounted for, as we'd have in other departments, as well as for housing element consulting services. For Public Works, in addition to the staffing expenses that I discussed earlier, there is a need to establish a budget for the city's water accounts. This would provide improved accounting for existing expenses. Additionally, public work staff has incurred significant expenses related to storms and replacing parks and landscaping equipment. And finally, for the capital projects category, this is a single amendment to establish a budget for the main library improvement project on the revenues and expenditure side. And so overall, the total proposed amendments equate to a net change of 2.36 million across all funds. And so with that, staff is recommending adoption of the fiscal year 2022-23 mid-year budget amendments. As a preview of next steps in the budget development process, the fiscal year 2023-24 budget principles and direction for the upcoming budget will occur on April 25th and continue through June of this year. The public budget workshop will be held on June 1st. The public hearing is scheduled for June 13th, and the final adoption of the budget is scheduled for June 27th. And as mentioned, this process will include a determination and use of the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds. So online, we have interim finance director Marvin Davis available for questions, along with many members of our management team. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mello, for that overview of the budget amendments. And at this time, before we ask our questions and have our discussion, City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G2, amend the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on item G2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. I'm actually going to kick it off with a couple of questions, Ms. Mello. One is about the hotel reimbursements under the city manager's line item. Looking at the staff report, it shows that the city manager's amendments included the MP AEF, $1 million, that's for the schools, and various other items. And the line item for the hotel reimbursement also included the community funding subcommittee approval. So do you have an, and that I believe is $10,000? So does that, does that mean that there's $70,000 that we expended on the hotel reimbursements during the storms? Or how much have we spent on the hotels for storm relief?
Stephen Stoltier, our assistant city manager, I believe, has more information on that item.
Yes, so we have offered three rounds of hotel reimbursement so far this season through the storms, and currently, our finance department is working through the first batch of submittals for reimbursement. So that $70,000 was an approximate amount for the total number of submissions we had at the time when we created this. I do believe that should be a sufficient amount to cover all the reimbursements.
Okay, so you don't think it'll go over $70,000?
I, you know, fingers crossed we don't get additional storms, but yeah.
Okay, but I do want to point out for residents, we've had many questions. I know council members have gotten emails, texts, calls from upset residents who understandably are extremely frustrated with the situation. I do want to just highlight how I think responsive the city was in offering that generous reimbursement. The first round, I believe, we didn't even have an income kind of requirement. We kind of rethought that, I think, and put one in. But I just wanted to thank staff for developing that program and just letting residents know that I don't think other cities got that. So that was my first comment. Let me just finish, and then I think other council members will want to weigh in. Ms. Mello, there's an item here about city water accounts. So is this just for general fund, or does it also include our water fund? Because it's my understanding that kind of water money sits separate than city money.
So Marvin Davis might jump in with more information. My understanding is that this is just for the water that our own city facilities use, and so that wouldn't necessarily be related to the enterprise of the water fund?
Thank you for that clarification. That makes perfect sense. And then I know there are a lot of residents who are following along, who followed the priority setting workshop that we held, who wrote in advocating for various items. And we went in a very strategic way with our priority setting and work plan developments coming, and then budget setting is coming. So for those residents who are tracking and wanting to make sure that their priorities, to see if it falls within the budget or not, should they then be paying attention on April 25th and then again on June 1st? Or what's the, what can we tell folks of how to stay involved?
Yes, we would encourage everyone to participate as many times as they're able. We have our budget principles adaption before the council on April 25th, which should be a robust discussion. And then the June 1st, we'll be presenting what we have thus far in putting together the budget, and then the public hearing on June 13th as well. So there are four opportunities to provide feedback.
Thank you. And when, so when will the first kind of tada of what's getting in? Is that going to be a couple of days before when our staff report gets released?
On June 1st, we'll be presenting the public transparency portal, or that will go live. And so the public can dig in via that portal, and then we'll be going over that in detail at the workshop.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Mellow. So City Councilmember Nash, you wanted to say something, I believe?
I was just going to jump in while you were talking about the hotel reimbursements and say, I had several emails from residents who were really heartfelt thanks for those hotel reimbursements, including one who said that it really shows where the city, how the city prioritizes residents. And it, just thank you to staff. I know it's been a tremendous amount of work and that it was a great idea and really very, very strongly appreciated from residents and council. And I do have one question about that. Is there any chance of getting reimbursement from PG&E for that? I know that Mayor Willison at the, at one meeting specifically mentioned that to PG&E, and I'm hoping we're taking advantage of that.
May toss that item over to our city manager or assistant city manager?
Yes, I'll say that we will, we will attempt to do that for sure, yes.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Vice Mayor Taylor, Councilmember Store or Combs, any comments on the budget? Is there a motion then? City Clerk Karen, you're looking for a motion to adopt?
Yes, it's a resolution.
So is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Councilmember Combs?
I move.
I second.
I second.
I believe Vice Mayor Taylor was having audio issues, but she beat you to it, Councilmember Door. So we'll have the first from Councilmember Combs and a second from Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs, a second by Vice Mayor Taylor, to adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to our third and final regular business item, which is G3, adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the salary schedule as of April 9th, 2023, related to and supporting Menlo Park Community Campus Supervision Programs and Operations. And to introduce this item is our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt. Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Joining me with this, for this presentation, again, is Ms. Mello, the administrative services director. It's wonderful to be here tonight before you to discuss this item, salary schedule amendments related to and supporting the Menlo Park Community Campus Supervision and Operations. The recommendation here is that the city council adopt the resolution to approve these amendments to the city of Menlo Park salary schedule. One is to update the position title with no change in salary range to Library and Community Services Manager. The second one is to update a position title with no change to the salary range to Assistant Library and Community Services Director. Now, the third one is kind of optional. It's not required, but just more like cleanup of the salary schedule would be to delete the Assistant Community Services Director, assuming that one and two also take place. And again, these would not result in any change in the city's current total authorized full-time equivalent headcount. Just a picture of the Library and Community Services Department from our department retreat last year. Wonderful group of folks. I think this is most of them. There are a few more not shown. There are immediate critical and critical needs in the Library and Community Services Department. In particular, there's a management-level position that has been staffed on an interim basis for over 16 months, continuing to staff that key management role on an interim basis is unsustainable at this point, 16 months in. It's becoming increasingly challenging to the city's capabilities to effectively execute on the desired goals of that very important project, the MPCC, as well as other city priorities to touch the Library and Community Services Department. With every vacancy, we evaluate the organization's current and future personnel needs prior to moving forward with the recruitment. As you all know, we're very intensely occupied with preparations for opening the new Menlo Park Community Campus Facility slated to open in less than a year. And in particular, qualified and effective oversight of that new facility is very important, critical to its success. As you know, that facility will include a library, recreation center, senior center, school-aged childcare, and aquatics in one facility. So quite a range of disciplines there for the building manager to oversee. Ideally, that level of oversight would be put in place up to 12 months in advance of the new facility opening. This would allow the manager to meaningfully engage in the planning and operations for the startup operations in the new facility. Fortunately, we do have a number of staff internally who have been working on that project. And of course, internal advancement of our current personnel is a big goal of ours. So this is an opportunity there as well. If city council authorizes these salary schedule amendments tonight, they would be effective April 9th. At the current rate of recruitment, it's anticipated to be three to six months to onboard the new manager that's taking us pretty deep into this calendar year and pretty close to the opening. Succession planning and organizational resiliency is incredibly important throughout the city organization and in the Library and Community Services Department. This allows us to continue to deliver high-quality services to the community on a perpetual basis. The city is a perpetual institution, and we need to preserve institutional knowledge as we move forward through the years. So we continually take proactive steps to identify and develop new leaders from within the organization in particular, as well as to attract qualified talent from the local community and beyond where needed. And we prepare those emerging leaders to seamlessly advance to leadership roles like the ones Brittany and I are in and that we're grateful for. So when current leadership transitions out of the organization, those So when current leadership transitions out of the organization, those emerging leaders are prepared to step into those roles seamlessly. So regarding the positions themselves, there are two of them that are really key that we're asking the City Council to basically update some existing titles with no change to the salary range, also at the management level, so no change there. So the first is Library and Community Services Manager. This position would have oversight of multiple synergistic functions within the Library and Community Services Department. Again, think Menlo Park Community Campus and the many disciplines that will be in that same facility. The portfolio of the individual would depend somewhat on the skills and abilities that they possess. But one combination could be libraries, childcare and senior services in their portfolio. Or it could be recreation, sports, gymnastics, aquatics, other combinations. Importantly, for that organizational resiliency that I spoke of, the LCS manager classification could be assigned to any combination of those responsibilities as needed. So it really does encompass all of the department's functions. And this is similar to the Library and Community Services Supervisor level, which the City Council approved a couple of years ago for the same reason. The LCS manager would report directly to the Assistant Director or the Department Head. The other change before you tonight is the proposed Assistant Library and Community Services Director. This would be changing the Assistant Library Services Director classification to Library and Community Services Assistant Director. This would combine the scopes of the Assistant Library Services Director and the Assistant Community Services Director classifications. Those are already very similar in scope. The Assistant LCS Director, if approved by council, would have oversight for all the department programs, functions and activities, not just one half or the other. They would develop and implement and interpret public policy across the department. They would serve as a deputy to the department head, reporting directly to the department head, and would serve as the acting department head across the whole department, in the absence of the department director. Also very critical at this point in our progress toward opening the new MPCC. There is no impact to the city's general fund associated with the requested action. The proposed salary schedule revisions would not result in any change to the city's current total authorized full-time equivalents nor to salary ranges. As noted in the staff report, here are the proposed changes. Again, the deletion is not necessary. It's really just kind of cleanup. And again, here's that recommendation. And with that, happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. So before we turn it over to council, City Clerk Karen, can you please open it up for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G three, adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the salary schedule as of April ninth, 2023, related to and supporting Menlo Park Community Campus Supervision Programs and Operations, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G three. And our first speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Willison, council members and staff. I may have missed it, but do, are there people currently in these positions or similar positions that will have to reapply in order to, to maintain their employment? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So I actually have two questions. One is a follow-up from Ms. Pam Jones. And the second is a question about how these new titles and new positions fit into like an org chart? Because it's hard to, without the context, kind of see where we're going, what have you.
Thank you for the question. So to the first question, no current employees would be displaced from their employment by any means. This, this new classification would create opportunities for internal advancement for current employees. There is an individual who is in an acting management role, who would certainly be, we would be strongly interested in seeing that individual apply for this position for certain. They are a current employee of the city, kind of serving in an out-of-class assignment for the past sixteen months. So regardless of the outcome, you know, that process, they would still remain an employee of the city. But I just do want to add that the city is fortunate to have several current personnel who have extensive experience working in and serving the Bell Haven neighborhood, who would be qualified and competitive in an open recruitment and all of our management recruitments are open recruitments for the proposed Library and Community Services Manager position. In addition to qualified external candidates or in particular local ones who might apply. But we're just very fortunate to have folks with that, that direct experience, serving the neighborhood, who would be qualified and we believe interested in applying. To your second question, how would this fit into the organizational chart? The Library and Community Services Department currently has three management positions. The Director, the Assistant Library Services Director, the Assistant Community Services Director. So this would really kind of keep that, that same structure, but provide far more flexibility in the Assistant Director range. Because the Assistant Library and Community Services Director, as well as the Assistant Library and Community Services Manager, those classifications would be such that the individuals could be assigned to any one of the department's functions across the board, not just limited to kind of one half or the other.
Sorry, can you repeat what the three management roles are again?
Yes, so there's the Library and Community Services Director. And then there are two Assistant Directors, Assistant Library Services Director and Assistant Community Services Director, which are holdovers from before the pandemic and before the departments combined.
So would this new classification then convert those two folks who are currently the assistants, one in library services and one in community services, they'd get this new title?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say to the individual level, but the classifications, yes. There would continue to be those three management roles. However, the two would now become broad-based where they could supervise any of the functions within the department. There is an individual who's serving in an interim role. And that individual, like with any recruitment, they need to go through a recruitment process to be placed in the role.
Sure, sorry, I guess I didn't mean specific individual, just as the placeholder of the role. So is one of the, so is this director, that's you, right?
That's me.
Okay, okay. And then you have two Assistant Directors right now.
Correct.
So those two Assistant Directors, that are those, one of those Assistant Directors is currently an interim position?
Correct.
I see. And so this then gives you flexibility to, flexibility around those two assistant positions.
Correct, and brings the classifications themselves up to date with the current structure of the department, which is Library and Community Services. I'll just give an example. One of the, one of the two Assistant Directors has actually supervised every division within the department over the past three years. However, their classification is, is very much, as it's currently written, really only describing one half of the department. Because again, it's a holdover from before the department's combined in 2020.
And then the managers, then, they go under the Assistant Directors?
In a manner of speaking, I, I think they could report either to the, an Assistant Director or to the Director, really, it kind of depends on the workload and having a good span of control, the number of direct reports for each, you know, individual who is a manager.
Okay, so the intent of this is way back when, maybe five years ago? At some point, we merged the two. I don't remember when that was.
About three, three years.
It was right before the pandemic?
It was kind of as an outcome of the pandemic.
Okay, okay. We merged it. And so this is just catching up on some classifications?
Yes, and also preparing for the Menlo Park Community Campus, which is sort of the physical embodiment of the combined department. And to have effective management oversight there, where written into their classification is the responsibility to oversee all of those five functions.
Okay, thank you. I think I've been hogging the time and I see Councilmember Nash might have a question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, it's just a point of, of clarification of the history as I remember it. During the staff reduction, right, there, there was a decision made to, to combine the Community Services and Library Services and thereby getting, removing the need for two department heads. I vaguely remember that as being an artifact of the pandemic. And, and not necessarily that that was something that the decision had been made was we were just committing to as, as the new structure. Now, all that being said, I, obviously, on council, I'm not on staff. It seems as though we have committed to that, and, and I'm not saying that I needed that memo. But at the time the decision was made, I didn't, I didn't read it as this was a permanent change. It looks as it is a permanent change. I have no objection to it, but that's just the history as I remember it.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you for all the information. Is the intent to have it, to be able to have one or two Assistant Directors and one or two managers, realizing you only have two open headcount, but some, but you could use the headcount in either of those positions? Or is there, what is the plan?
Yeah, I think, I think, no, that's, that's good. And I appreciate the question. In particular, as it regard, pertains to succession planning, I think the, probably the ideal state. And again, it really depends on the individuals, you know, involved and the skills and experience that they possess would be, you know, one director, one Assistant Director, and then one manager. Because it's just sort of kind of completes the, the series and creates that succession planning paths to advancement internally into the leadership of the organization. So then again, that we have that organizational resiliency, that continuity of knowledge and so forth.
Thank you. I just, it was confusing whether how many, how many positions there were other than I knew how many FTEs were approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify.
Any other comments, questions, Councilmember Door, Vice Mayor Taylor, Councilmember Door?
Yeah, thank you so much for this great presentation. I just want to echo and share back what I've shared previously of a lot of excitement for what the Library and Community Services team is doing and really excited to see the team staffed up properly to support this great work, to see the MPCC launch later this year or early next year. And so really excited for that and appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor, anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. I love the picture of the department. It's really heartwarming to see those smiling faces. This is such a great department. My future request for, and this would be to any kind of salary amendments from Ms. Mello, probably, when they do come forward, it's helpful for us to have the context of kind of org charts. So we can see, I think, how it fits, just for us to have that, that visualization. And it can be really helpful. But I believe there's no more comments or questions. And so you are looking for a resolution to be adopted? To amend the salary schedule? Okay, so I can go ahead and make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Willison and a second by City Councilmember Combs to adopt a resolution to approve the following amendments to the City of Menlo Park Salary Schedule. Update position title with no change to salary range for the Library and Community Services Manager. Update position title with no change to salary range for the Assistant Library and Community Services Director. And delete Assistant Community Services Director. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower.
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Willison.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. We have now reached H informational items.
Mayor Willison, we do have one more regular item.
Oh, my goodness. You are right. I was jumping the gun here. Thank you, City Clerk Karen. You're right. We do have one more regular business item, and that's about us. So this is item G four. Appoint City Councilmembers to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees and disband inactive ad hoc subcommittees. And City Clerk Karen, you're on deck to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor Willison, and hello, City Council. I'm your city clerk. The item before you tonight is requesting the City Council action on a couple of items related to City Council subcommittees. The first is a request to disband the inactive subcommittees. Staff is also requesting that the City Council appoint members to the active standing and ad hoc subcommittees for calendar year 2023. And lastly, the City Council may wish to appoint ad hoc subcommittees to the two pending development projects currently requesting development agreements. Those two projects are the Parkline Project at Ravenswood Ave. and the Commonwealth Three Project on Jefferson Drive. That concludes my introduction and happy to answer any clarifying questions or open for public comment.
Thank you. So I can turn it, oh, let's open it for a public comment, please, City Clerk Karen. Thank you.
So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comments on item G four, appoint City Councilmembers to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees and disband inactive ad hoc subcommittees, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card and return it to the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Jenny Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, neighbors. My name is Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Block. And when I was just reviewing this, my only question is, although these projects are technically like not, some of these are not active and on, you know, our radar, I'm just wondering if there's any type of staff scope that's going to be tracking any of the progress or milestone? Like, I, I've just, you know, making sure that things stay on track as negotiated, you know? If there's an opportunity for the, the city to get back involved in some of these projects, I guess that's, that's my only concern. But otherwise, I totally agree with the staff's recommendations. And I think you guys are awesome. And I just want to thank you so much. Okay, bye.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, and this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G four. Seeing none. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you, Ms. Michelle, for your question. I think it might be a good time to have a refresher for all of us on the difference between a standing committee and an ad hoc committee and how long council member committees should exist and what their purposes are. So who on staff would like to give us a little one-on-one on committees?
I will, I will start. We may, may turn to either the city manager or city attorney for additional information. Typically, standing subcommittees are subcommittees that have a long-term charge. As an example, the City Council has the Standing Committee of Community Grant Funding, which is done annually. And so that is a standing committee. The other committees listed here are ad hoc subcommittees and And ad hoc subcommittees are and how do, let's see, I apologize. So ad hoc subcommittees are for a more specified charge. And once that charge is completed, they are considered to be inactive, completed, and therefore disbanded. The ones listed here, as an example, looking at anti-displacement strategy subcommittee that has been combined with the, I believe, the housing element, and so that charge is completed, so therefore it is being requested to be disbanded. So the list that you have here that say inactive city council subcommittees, those have completed their charges and are being requested to be disbanded. And again, that's kind of just very high level of the difference between a standing and an ad hoc subcommittee. And of course, I I open it to our city manager, city attorney for any further clarification that could be provided.
Through the mayor, just for the benefit of the public, one other refresher would be that a standing committee is a Brown Act subject to open, open meetings noticing where is an ad hoc subcommittee is not.
Thank you, city manager. So following up on Ms. Michelle's comment. And I'm just pulling this out of thin air. If the council of two members, if the council wanted to kind of keep an eye on the housing element and how things were progressing, is that, would that be a type of appropriate committee? And if so, would that be a standing committee or an ad hoc committee? Or is that inappropriate for the council to kind of hover over staff and and see what you're up to?
Let's see, I always appreciate the opportunities to work with city council on various topics. So I think it's a matter of whether, and again, happy to have the city attorney chime in on some of this. But there's a difference between two city council members deciding to Brown Act or or team up to dive deeper into a cer- certain topic. That that can happen regardless of whether it's a subcommittee formation or not. So I think the important thing from a subcommittee formation is that it's definitely established by the council. The council's kind of as a body is saying that they they do want especially with the ad hoc subcommittee, to council members to kind of focus on that. Tap staff resources as part of that and then report back to the full council. And so that's where it's, I'd say it's the timeline or timeframe of that. I think the anti-displacement example from the December timeframe was perfect. It was formed, two council members met, discussed, came back at the next meeting with recommendations for the full council. Council, I think, for the most part, generally, you know, appreciated that that work. And shortly thereafter, that that subcommittee was disbanded. So that's a great example of a subcommittee. There's other subcommittees related to development agreement negotiation that may take multiple months to to work through that. But I'll say if there's a ad hoc subcommittee that has been working on something for multiple years, that's probably an indication that's tending more as a standing subcommittee than an ad hoc subcommittee.
Thank you for that interesting description. I think Councilmember Door, do you have a question or comment? So I just wanted to kind of lay down for council and for the public of what we're trying to do here. And my housing element was just an example. I'm not proposing we create a housing element subcommittee. But I think it is, members of the council can always ask questions of city staff. City staff definitely report back to the full council regularly. So I I'm comfortable, you know, kind of where we're at for the most part. With that, unless anyone has any general subcommittee things, I think what we're going to do is start with the disbanding recommendations from staff. So these are the ones that have the, well, in the staff report, they're red. But there they are. Okay, so what we'd like to do here, starting off, is just going one by one and confirming that these are indeed, I guess, dead. So and they can be removed from any list. Is that correct? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, that's the, that's just because it's listed as potential disbanding doesn't mean that the council couldn't revive it, but that's, that's the intent.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Taylor, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Woolison. So just looking at the list, with the anti-displacement strategy subcommittee, I'm comfortable with it being disbanded, but there are some concerns actually just brought up to the city attorney today. But I guess, at any rate, so that's, that's the one committee. The Bayfront Homeless Encampment, I actually discussed briefly with the city manager about having something that looks at homeless citywide. And let's see, and then as far as the Willow Road over interchange, the, I think the work, I mean, the physical work has been done, but still the, I think the planting of the vegetation has not been. And those are my initial comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So I think we'll go one by one and I, your comments are noted. So the rail subcommittee, I believe the council made clear that everybody on council wants to know what's going on with rail. And so I, as being the only remaining member of that subcommittee, which I think maybe never met, we'll go ahead and disband it unless there's an objection. Okay. Anti-displacement strategy subcommittee, again, Vice Mayor Taylor, I think that council members can at any time, you know, work with the city manager, even bring in a Brown Act buddy to do so. But in terms of having a charge from the council on a specific purpose, it seems to me like we had a very narrow to do, which was to prioritize the anti-displacement strategies for the housing element. And so, of course, there's ongoing concerns. But I think the specific charge there, in my opinion, is is completed. I'll ask my other colleagues if they're interested in there being a continuous subcommittee on that. Vice Mayor Taylor, did you want to chime in?
Yes, and and thank you. And and I agree. And just the concerns for me are with the anti-displacement strategies is the implementation. So that's where my concerns are.
Um, City Manager Murphy, do you have thoughts about what role a possible subcommittee would play in that development of these policies?
Let's see, I can start. I may need assistance from others for the refresher of the housing element adopted program. So I'd say at the, if if that's the realm that is being contemplated, yeah, I could see as part of the work on that effort that there may be, I'm not sure, we could say this this evening that there would be. So I think it's a matter of, we may need to look into that a little bit more. I think we're eagerly awaiting the response from the state about the overall housing element. And we should know in the next week or so, because I think that may dictate how we're going to be focusing on some of these things. So on on that one, I'm not sure. I could say this evening that there would be
Yeah.
the need for that subcommittee, but I think we could definitely have that on a list for a future subcommittee.
In thinking about that one in particular, this one also makes me feel like we all want to track what's going on with anti-displacement. I mean, I know Councilmember Combs has expressed some thoughts about it. So to me, I think the problem that might be trying to be solved is just check-ins with council and updates. So I feel like this is one that should have daylight for all council members. That's where I'm leaning. Vice Mayor Taylor is asking my colleagues what they think about that. Uh, Councilmember Door.
Oh, just reflecting on our recent priorities dialogue, this one seems to fall nicely under our city priority of our of housing. And so just making the connecting point there, yes, I'm excited to continue following what's happening with anti-displacement. And would love those updates.
So Vice Mayor Taylor, are you comfortable then if it stays as kind of a full council and not a specific subcommittee? But that we are kind of requesting some daylight into progress being made on that?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then we can take that one off. So the homeless encampment, similar situation that that had a specific charge, I believe, at a specific time where there was a multi-jurisdictional effort, I think. That, yes, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, and and you are correct. So I am comfortable with this subcommittee being disbanded. However, there is a, there are citywide challenges around homelessness. So we can take the same approach we did with the last, where all council would have eyes on it. I'm not sure if there is homeless encampments in all districts. I wouldn't be surprised. But I think it's important that this is an issue. It's linked to housing, of course, and health and safety. So I'd like to see something.
Yeah, I I agree. And your linkage, again, just as as Councilmember Door did with our priorities makes a lot of sense. So just now that we have two of these, City Manager Murphy, that we basically said, no subcommittee, but keep us in the loop. Do you have an idea of what that looks like on your end? I guess even the rail subcommittee is kind of like that, too, keeping us all in the loop on rail issues.
Let's see, I I think that at a certain level, the has Councilmember Door reminded us all about the recent council priority setting, anything that kind of fits within that, given the work plans that we'll be working on and the reporting that we'll be doing, that 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 fits well. So I think thus far, we have two things specifically to housing, back back to rail, there's going to be, there's multiple things that are rail-related that are going to be on the council's agendas in the coming months. So I think we have opportunities for check-ins. And if there's questions from the council about where something's at, the council members can reach out to me. And then we can figure out ways of providing those updates.
Fabulous, thank you. We're now going on to the Facebook Willow Village Development Agreement. I believe that's already been negotiated. So I think we're ready to take that one off the list. Uh, Councilmember Door, never mind. Wes Menlo Annexation, Councilmember Door.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so thinking about this one, the annexation application is still pending. I believe none of us were on city council when this came up. And I would like to propose keeping a subcommittee or making a mini subcommittee to explore specifically the fee waiver aspect of what it would mean to address or look into this annexation. It's something I discussed briefly with the city manager previously, is specifically looking at that. And was reassured that a small assessment of that fee waiver would not take up too much staff time and would be interesting to know what that would look like. And so I would propose, and I would, of course, be on this, I would put myself down as the first member. And yes, would like to make that proposal. And I'd also like to check about if and how many other city council members would need to be on that subcommittee to to keep it in, to keep it active. Thank you.
So, City Manager Murphy, if we retain or want to go forward with the Willow Menlo Triangle Annexation Subcommittee, are we then off, if the council agrees with Councilmember Door and says you get resources, you get staff time to do this, how much time and resources are we authorizing? Because I think it's one thing if it's like a conversation about fee waiver. It's another thing if it's like a rabbit hole that's sucking up a lot of staff time and and derailing from other priorities. So can you elaborate on that?
Yes, so definitely attempting to avoid avoid rabbit holes. So I think because so much time has passed since the initial application, everything, there's a certain requirements that I think the the city has in terms of processing the application. And in terms of my refreshing of this this issue, I think it boils down to this topic of the fee waiver. So that was part of the conversation that I had with the Councilmember Door. So if it's a matter of spending time with a council member or two, just to kind of get the the refresh of previous staff reports on this topic and understanding the extent of the fee waiver for processing the request, it would be limited amount of staff time. I'm not sure if you want to say it in terms of hours. Yes, it to me, it would be I I think I'm on the main person with the continuity of the previous history on this. And so it'd be probably a couple of meetings with the council member and a few hours of research refresher on my time. And then it's kind of a matter of like reporting back to the full council.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, just so I can understand, the the the, it says annexation application is still pending. That's pending with the city. Or, and so then the city has to do something, because I thought that the county was the main blocker here. Is it, is it not?
Let's see, so part part of this is keep keeping, trying to, the balancing act of providing enough information about this topic so that the council can decide whether or not to have a subcommittee versus getting into the topic. Otherwise, we're into the topic. So the annexation requires processing on the city side, but also the LAFCO Local Area Formation Commission. There's a work on the city side and the county in terms of property tax sharing agreements, inventory of infrastructure, and that's where I'd say there's been progress over the years. That's the the one benefit of some time. So the main thing with infrastructure is that the county has been successful in getting a grant for redoing Alameda de Las Pulgas and as part of that, addressing some of the pedestrian deficiencies. So that that is something that is different from the from the past. There's other research that need to be finalized on the other two streets that form the triangle. So that's the infrastructure side. Another part is the zoning. The the area would need to be kind of pre-zoned. And if it's a matter of taking an existing zoning district in the city, such as R1U, and saying that that is what applies to the new new parcels as opposed to a new custom zoning district, that kind of simplifies things. So there's a a number of things that need to be done that are both the city obligation and a county obligation. But to kind of do that processing, the city does have a fee associated with processing that, pretty much pay for staff time on that. The property owners that submitted the petition for the annexation did collect money, did did contribute thousands of dollars towards that. That's been expended expended. And then the city was processing it through a fee waiver, and then then things kind of stopped. So if we're going to start back up again on the processing, that that to me, as I've gotten myself back up to speed on this, I think is the key kind of critical issue for the city council to weigh in on is whether or not to, the time spent processing, whether that's some sort of fee waiver, fee reduction, or if the applicants are paying the full full freight on that going forward.
So and I I know I'm trying not to get into this, but just wanting to understand, they did pay some money to the city. Right? And that was all exhausted.
Correct.
Yeah. How much money was that?
I I I I hesitate on some things, but let's just say for discussion purposes, let's say like $5,000.
And and how much of, what's the dollar value in a ballpark of the work that's still to be done? Do we?
That that's where I'd hesitate. I'm okay kind of saying that rough number, but I'd hesitate to say anything right now. But that that's part of what I think does require these X hours of staff time to be able to come back with with that.
I mean, I'll just say, in in theory, I'm supportive of of the idea. I don't know if it's a subcommittee or whatever. Lowering this or sort of restarting it. But I, I think my suggestion, Councilmember Door, is, is that you should connect with, and maybe you already have Supervisor Mueller. And, and, and there should be some understanding there of like, because I know that this infrastructure element is key to a, a lot of the unincorporated pockets around the city that make more sense in the city. But it's not that simple. Because while I'm supportive of this, I, I want to, I would want to make sure that there's an aligning of the politicals and that, that there is someone in the county side that's willing to invest the time and effort of what may be needed to make sure that like, once we get through all the processing on the city side, that there's actually going to be something that allows us to, to move forward. I mean, that's my only concern. But I, I mean, I, I'm, you know, if there's a sense of where the council majority wants to go, here I'm supportive and I, like I said, I would be supportive of, of, of the request.
I've been watching city council meetings for like seven years and I've seen those folks come so many times to council. Right now, our city manager is like almost, I mean, thank goodness, Stephen, Mr. Stoltz is here and Ms. Mello and, you know, he's staffing up. But if this is going through City Manager Murphy with everything else on the plate and kind of looking at our prior, strategic priorities and how challenging it can be to bring an item on the agenda related to housing or safe streets or what have you. I feel like until the organization is built back and he has his full team, I'm not comfortable. But I encourage you, Councilmember Door, to, I think the folks that live in the triangle have a lot of historical information. And I'm sure City Manager Murphy would be happy to share with you some documents out of yesteryear. And there might be conversations, as Councilmember Combs said, with folks in the county that can be pursued. So there's a lot can be pursued, just not in the subcommittee framework. But I just think with everything we have going on, I, I can't support it at this time.
And I don't know where, but I would just have it like, the extent to which it isn't formal. I would welcome the opportunity to work with you on this or to, to support you in, in these efforts as, as like a sort of not, maybe you don't want, as an informal sort of brown act. Because I, I think, I think it is a real, real, real interesting topic. And I think we've all seen that these, I would have given up by now, I'll be very honest. Like being in Menlo Park would not have been worth it for me for as much time and effort that they have put into this. And so I certainly want to be responsive and that maybe, and I, I think as City Manager Murphy and I have had this discussion, like to establish some sort of framework or rubric for how we then can look at like some of these other possible annexations. But, but yeah, I think, I am supportive. I do think the mayor's concern is, is, is valid. That if, if the city attorney, excuse me, the city manager is, is working on this, it's, it's sort of like, like that, that, that's a high hourly rate for maybe work that and doesn't really deserve it at this moment in time.
Councilmember Nash or Vice Mayor Taylor, we have a lot more committees to get to. I know we're being, trying to be very sympathetic to Councilmember Door and we all, of course, want to say yes. I, yeah. Councilmember Nash?
Well, just very, very briefly, I agree with what's been said. I am very sympathetic and the residents there have been tremendously strong advocates for many, many, many years. I also think there's some, it makes some sense for the city itself. I think we have absolutely no bandwidth for it at this time. And I would actually go further than saying I don't, I would like to keep it on the back burner. But I'm concerned not just about City Manager Murphy's time, but also staff times generally. Just with all the priorities we have, all the needs our residents have expressed that we don't even have on the priority list and everything. To me, to try and add additional residents and go through that hoop, I think we need to take care of our current residents first.
Yes, and I appreciate that and deeply echo those sentiments of wanting to focus on the parties that we've set, focus on the work we have to do and we've said are our priorities. And so, yeah, just know that that was first in my mind as I asked the city manager about, should this be explored more and should we maybe continue having a, a, some kind of a ad hoc subcommittee to explore this? Given the potential opportunity of, that also having more residents would entail for the city. And so if, if this is where the
And potential costs, too.
And potential costs, yes, there's always that. But I am happy to continue exploring this as the, as the kind of district representative up there. And Councilmember Combs would love to take you up on that and continuing the conversation.
So it sounds like a brown act buddy, beautiful relationship will begin. And we're going to take this off the list, though, as an official council subcommittee. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Taylor, are you comfortable with that? Okay, great. All right, we're now at the Willow Road 101 interchange. So I believe this charge was, what exactly, City Manager Murphy? Because I, I know there is still decisions or landscaping to be made. But are we at, was it more community outreach? And now we're at the point where it's going to be coming to council for some kind of design decision?
I probably need some assistance from others. And that's part of the challenge, I'll, I'd say going forward is for any subcommittees that are formed going forward. It'd be great if the charge kind of lives on the document with the, with, with the subcommittee. But let me see if, yeah, so the most recent was, the subcommittee did, was very helpful in the direction that was provided for the landscaping to be pursued. The council as a whole then weighed in on that. And now it's a matter of actually executing on the, the design plans, working with Caltrans to ultimately get the, get the project out to bid and landscaping installed.
So the, the design has been, or?
The design parameters. Yeah, there was a specific council meeting where that was identified.
So Councilmember Combs and Vice Mayor Taylor, what are your thoughts on this subcommittee disbanding?
There we go. Yeah, I, I don't know exactly where we're at here. Again, at one point, there was, there were two options, a sort of a really nice option and a not as nice option. And the, the city were, was exploring grants to implement, to supplement the funding, to put in the, the really nice option. And, and I, I know that the Vice Mayor and I gave direction after the last grant was not granted, that we would just focus on landscaping that met the current funds allotted. And so, and so, yeah, I, I don't know where we are. I mean, I, I would be okay in, in theory with disbanding this. I would like an informational item because I don't know where, where this is other than, than, yeah, there certainly is, there's no landscaping that has been done. And, and, and it would be great to understand exactly where, where this is.
Vice Mayor Taylor, are you comfortable disbanding it? And I mean, I also love an info item on this as well.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so we have disbanded all of these suggested disbandments. So now we're going to go back.
Mayor Willison, pardon the interruption. Can we take an action on the disbanding of these with a motion in a second?
Is there a motion to disband the recommended inactive subcommittees, Vice Mayor Taylor?
I'll make the motion to disband the inactive subcommittees.
Thank you. And Vice, Councilmember Nash?
I will second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Taylor in a second, by City Councilmember Nash, to disband inactive city council's subcommittees. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Door?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go back to the top of the list and we're going to start with our one and only standing subcommittee, which I believe meets like once or twice at the end of the year. Basically, it's like a Santa experience where you give out money. So we still need to give out money. And is anyone wanting to get off? Is anyone wanting to get on?
Yeah, so like one of, we gave some direction in connection with the last cycle and it was about sort of marketing and advertising. And, and, and so as long as that, I, I think I've been on this since I've been on council. I enjoy it as being, giving away money. But if there is someone else who desires to be on it, I'm, I'm also willing to, you, you know, give, give them that opportunity. So, and I would say it would be me because I think I've, I've been on it longer than, than, than the Vice Mayor. If there is someone to transition off of it.
And Vice Mayor Taylor, are you interested in staying on it as well?
I'm fine staying on.
Okay. Councilmember Door, did you want to?
Would be happy to support with that, but also don't want to take over something that sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problems, but only if you want to do it, like, right? If, if, if it is something you're interested in doing, then I, I certainly am cool with, with letting you transition in.
Okay, thank you. I would love to do that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're taking fun away from Councilmember Combs and giving it to Councilmember Door. I have noticed one comment while we're, oh, I guess that would be off agenda, nevermind. I do notice that the budget goes up every year from the allocated budget, but maybe we'll talk about that during the budget.
That is all Vice Mayor Taylor, all Vice Mayor.
So we are now moving on to Aquatics Operator Negotiation Subcommittee. This is a new subcommittee that we just created to negotiate with Team Sheepper. So it seems like it has a very specific charge, which is a good thing. And we just recently appointed Councilmember Nash and Vice Mayor Taylor. So Vice Mayor Taylor?
I hope this is staying on the list.
I don't think we're getting rid of this one, but are you happy to stay on it?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nash, fabulous. Okay. Now we're going to the Climate Action. Okay, this is kind of confusing because the climate action tasks are numbered and we kind of bifurcated them. I'm, but Councilmember Nash is on all of the Climate Action Plan Subcommittee. I'm on numbers one through five, but I've really only been working on electrification. And Councilmember Nash has been working on resilience, I believe, or sea level rise. So, and I know probably Councilmember Door wants to get in on some action, too. And Councilmember Combs has no interest, so that's fabulous. Okay, so any comments, suggestions, thoughts about? I'm going to do both of these at once because we might want to talk about them as a group. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. And I remember when the number six subcommittee was created, was out of my request regarding the sea level rise, especially with safer, all the projects that are happening on Bayfront. I am very comfortable keeping this subcommittee and staying on it.
Great. In terms of my role, so we're going to be, we're, we're working on electrification right now. So I'd like to stay on electrification, which is, is that number one or number three? Okay, one, I can never remember what, all the different references. So that's my position, at least for now. I could see rolling off it at some point. You know, once we solve all of climate change and electrification. Councilmember Nash, I'd like to hear your thoughts on these. And then we'll go to Councilmember Door to see what she wants to do get out for.
I think I probably feel the same as you. I feel like I'd like to continue, I think it's just another month or two for electrification. I am interested in being on this subcommittee, but I also want to give Councilmember Door an opportunity. So I, I can, I am flexible.
I'd love to hear from Councilmember Door.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate the, the opportunity to, to join in and support the climate action work of our city. I, Councilmember Nash, I'm wondering if there's one of the, one, either one that would make more sense? Because I, I feel agnostic towards jumping on either one and I want to make sure there's good continuity in the work that you've already been leading there. And especially with also your role on PCE, I think there's some important connections there. But there are also important connections with number six. And so I, I appreciate your, your thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Door. I see Vice Mayor Taylor's hand back up.
I forgot to put it down, Mayor Willison.
Great. Councilmember Nash, you are being asked to pick something.
I am good any which way. I am able to work on climate action through both as the EQC liaison and on PCE as the board member. I am.
Can I follow up, Councilmember Nash? Is PCE do a lot of climate action number six work?
They do not.
I mean, I don't want to say what to do, but.
That is fine. Okay. So I will stay on one through five and yes, it's totally fine. It's, that is fine. Yes, so you will.
So we'll revisit this again. So this isn't forever and ever, but it sounds like we're, if everyone's comfortable, it looks like we're heading towards Councilmember Nash coming off number six and being replaced with Councilmember Door.
Thank you.
Okay. That's, that doesn't mean whoever isn't on the subcommittee doesn't care about an item or can't talk to staff about an item or work on an item. Okay, Economic Development Subcommittee ad hoc. So this was Councilmember Nash and former Councilmember Mueller. I was always confused with the charge of this. I'm sorry, we missed the Connect Menlo Community Amenities Subcommittee. Is that done or are we still discussing community amenities?
So we are hoping to wrap it up very, very soon in the spring, hopefully the springtime, and then have it come to council and be done. Basically, it is waiting for our very overworked staff to have some time to do that, which the housing element has been a priority over this.
So question for staff then. If we know kind of a trigger is coming to disband the committee, can you then do that when that happens? Or do we have to have like another resolution or vote at that time?
Yes, but no, that, that, I think the connect as Councilmember Nash spoke to, yes, there's, I think, one, one remaining step for, for that subcommittee's work. It's, it is dependent on staff bringing it forward. So when that comes forward as part of that action, as long as we've achieved that conclusion, then the subcommittee could be disbanded that same night. And then that, that would keep things fresh and, and clear for people going forward. Yes, exactly. Yeah.
And I just want to acknowledge how much work staff has done on it and how much is left to do before it can be brought forward.
And so then just piggybacking on that with the Aquatics Operator Agreement. So once something is negotiated, the same thing could potentially happen. Okay.
Yes, just for those that can't see my head nodding, yes.
So I, I hate to go back to the climate action ones, but I am a little confused on exactly what the charge of those committees are, that these being ad hoc subcommittees. Is that something, we don't have to resolve that tonight? But that might be something that those committee members should work with staff on defining if that's the direction we want to go on. Because I'm not clear, like, when does sea level rise end as a subcommittee? It's like, what's the task that, that was created for and how will we know when it's over? Okay. Economic Development Subcommittee, great example. I've always been confused by the charge of the subcommittee. Councilmember Nash, what's your charge?
So Councilmember Mueller and I possibly met once. We really, this committee never really, subcommittee never really got off the ground the year that, or however long it was that I was on it. I don't know, I would actually look to City Manager Murphy to see whether it would be helpful. I think it's, I mean, very honestly, I have a tremendous interest in it, but it never really, we never really did much with it. And I don't know if that's something that would be helpful to staff or not at this point, given that we're without an economic
This one reminds me a lot of the one, the, the ones where we were talking about lots of council members wanting to know about. I would propose we not have this as a subcommittee. I, I believe the mayor is the liaison. I, I believe the mayor, um, is the liaison with the Chamber of Commerce. And this is one of our prior strategic priorities. And so I would imagine this is going to be involving all council members. I see Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, there, wasn't there also like a downtown subcommittee? Did that go away or did that get combined into this? I can't.
Councilmember Mueller and I were, um, I think we were just brown acted on the downtown.
Oh, okay.
Um, I don't think that we specifically had.
Okay, yeah.
A subcommittee. And I think that it's actually a very good idea to, um, have this some dissolve and just be part of the entire councils.
I see Vice Mayor Taylor with her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. I, I was actually just going to ask the same question that Councilmember Combs, um, brought up. And then also during our priority setting, we added downtown. I forget, there were two pieces of downtown. I think one was economic, had to do with economic development. So. Yeah. So there's opportunity, um, Councilmember Nash.
Lots of opportunity. So I think, um, the staff has direction then that this is a full council topic. And as I, if I learn anything in the chamber stuff, um, which I'm actually meeting with, I'll do a council member update this week. But, um, anyway, okay. So Menlo Park Community Campus Subcommittee, I believe that's a very active subcommittee with a very specific charge. So, uh, I believe Vice Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Nash are deep in their work. So it seems like it would be disruptive to change the makeup of that committee. Okay, I'm seeing nods, council member. Yeah. Okay, um, so that stays as is, Reimagining Public Safety Subcommittee. So, um, Vice Mayor Taylor, do you want to comment on this subcommittee?
I believe, isn't there an info item on?
So we do have an info item. Thank you for the, the marketing of that. So the charge of this subcommittee, I might be making it up now retroactively, but it was to build trust with our new police chief to, hold listening to kind of understand community concerns related to policing and kind of come up with next steps, um, for the department on where to go from here. And so with the submittal of the staff report that our chief kindly put together, that outlines quite a few next steps. This might be one of those things where, um, we continue, Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Taylor and I continue to care about. And, you know, maybe as a brown act, talk to the chief as needed. But I think that our specific charge, um, might be wrapping up. I don't know if we've reimagined public safety, but, um, that's quite a large task for an ad hoc subcommittee. Vice Mayor Taylor, what are your thoughts?
I agree with you, Mayor Willison, and I also look at the number of subcommittees and it's a, a list. Um, I know that, if I'm not mistaken, Chief Norris wanted to continue it. Or maybe I'm misunderstood. So I'm not sure if we're ready at this time to actually disband it, but I will look to your direction for the city managers.
Norris is in chambers and is walking to the table. And so Chief Norris, the question for you is, are we ready to disband? And if not, what's our trigger to disband?
I, I can tell you, uh, Mayor and Vice Mayor, extraordinarily appreciative of the work that we've done, uh, over the last, I think, year and a half or so, uh, that we've been working in the subcommittee. I'm, I'm certainly interested in continuing the work that we have started at the momentum that we have with, uh, with what we've established through the subcommittee. But just if, if I'm doing a kind of a snap judgment on where we are in terms of the, the, the overall life of the ad hoc subcommittee itself. Um, I think it has somewhat served its purpose. I would certainly lean back on the two of you to say whether or not you feel like the purpose has been served in establishing the relationship with the police chief and understanding the direction of the police department and where we're going, which I think was really what we were trying to do with that subcommittee. And, and essentially catch up with some of the, the, uh, the dialogue that was kind of put on pause during the time of the interim police chief before my, my, I, I filled that position. And so, you know, my feeling is that we are in the right place with the right momentum. You certainly have a commitment from me that that momentum will continue. Um, and so I, I leave it up to the two of you to discuss and decide whether, whether you feel like this is a good time for us to sunset the ad hoc committee itself and continue the momentum.
Thank you, Chief Norris. So I, I agree. Um, I think this is a topic of wide council interest. And I, if we continue, I just think it could be potentially never ending. And so I think as issues come up, as you pursue the different items in your, um, plan, please keep us in the loop, come to council, um, reach out to any of us at any time. I'm sure we're, we're going to continue to be close and, and talk. But I see that Councilmember Nash has something to say.
I just want to thank the subcommittee as well as, uh, the chief. And I know that, um, city manager has been working hard with them. I know that you have had many, many, many meetings. I believe in the report it says 64. And I greatly appreciate all the work you've done on this and really doing a deep dive into it. Thank you.
Okay, then if there is consensus, there any objection then to disbanding the Reimagining Public Safety Subcommittee? Not seeing any. Okay, so, um, Ms. Heron, do you want us to do any, do we need to do anything with the, these before we move on to the next category?
Um, if we are going to be, uh, appointing to the potential ad hoc subcommittees, we can just encompass that with one motion.
Great. Okay, so, um, the first suggested ad hoc subcommittee would be to negotiate the development agreement on Commonwealth Three. I see Vice Mayor Taylor's hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. I would be interested in serving on this subcommittee.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Nash's hand raised.
I would also be interested in working on it. It sort of furthers our, what we're doing with the community amenities um, in Bayfront, but happy to consider if anyone else is interested.
I don't see anyone fighting you for it, so congratulations. Um, we're now going on to Parkline. This is one that I would very much like to be on, that it's in the middle of my district. And I'm looking at the list and seeing two names that aren't, actually one name that might not be represented at all. Um, and one name that's slightly represented. So I'm looking to, uh, Councilmember Door and Councilmember Nash. If anyone wants to join me, sorry, and Councilmember Combs, I was looking at him. Um, working with Parkline, um, on the development agreement negotiations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with serving on the subcommittee.
Okay.
Uh, um, but if Councilmember Door wants to, I'm more than happy to, to defer. That's, that's the only thing I'll say, but I, I'm totally cool to do it.
Councilmember Door?
Um, that, that sounds great. Thank you.
I think given the, the takeaway of your fun holiday grant making, this will make up for it. Okay, so Councilmember Combs and I will be on the Parkline, um, Development Agreement Subcommittee. Wonderful. Okay, so then I believe we need to do some kind of motion codifying. Oh, Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. Uh, make a motion to approve all of the council's discussion to disband and the new creation of subcommittees. Does that work?
I think we already disbanded in a motion, so why don't you just, uh, banned.
So City Clerk Karen, can you help me out?
It'll be to make appointments to City Council Standing and Ad Hoc, uh, Standing or Subcommittees.
I'll make a motion to appoint the City Council Subcommittee.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Door to make appointments to the City Council Standing and Ad Hoc Subcommittees. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Door?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are actually moving on to our informational items. Is that right, City Clerk Karen?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you. Um, informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. So City Clerk Karen, do we have any public, any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, H1, City Council Agenda Topics. H2, an update on the Emergency Water Storage Supply Project. H3, the Annual City Council Prioritizing Goal Setting Workshop Update. H4, Reimagining Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee Update. H5, the RIPA Data Annual Report for Calendar Year 2022. Or H6, the California Public Records Act Internal Procedures. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, press star nine. For those of you in person, please feel free to complete a speaker card and return it to the clerk's desk. Then our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Glad to see the city council prioritization. I'm working its way through the city planning process. The two items that I wanted to, uh, make public comment about are about the, um, the reimagining public safety and the, uh, RIPA data. Um, on the reimagining public safety, I'm glad to see that Menlo Park has put in to participate in the county mental health of program, um, given that the county focuses on mental health, it seems like a good fit. In terms of the, um, the proposal for an advisory body, um, it does seem that given the importance of the topic and, um, the importance of community participation and, that having a, a commission, um, does seem like a fair thing to do. We have commissions for environmental quality. We have commissions for, uh, complete streets. This does seem like a substantive topic that would merit a, a Brown Act Commission. And, um, on, uh, and, uh, like for, for, for an, an example, um, the, on the RIPA topic, it is, um, glad to see this, uh, data that's required by state law, um, being published and being available to view. And, um, one of the, uh, pieces of information that is, um, seem kind of striking in looking at the numbers is in terms of the stops by ethnicity. Um, it says that the share of people that are stopped by police who are Hispanic or Latino identified as such, um, by, are, is, um, 39.9%. Whereas the population of Hispanic or Latino people in Menlo Park residents is 15 and a half percent. And the population in San Mateo County as a whole is about 25%. So that does seem like a significantly higher share of, uh, Hispanic and Latino people being stopped by police than the share, uh, in the city or the county. And that does, uh, you know, raise questions as to why that might be. And it seems like, um, uh, the, uh, looking into why seems like an important topic. Um, also, the, there is not information about where those stops are occurring, and that is also important information to know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items. Okay, and I see Pam Jones. Pam, if you could let us know what item you're speaking on as well.
Uh, yes, thank you on the, uh, the last two, and I don't have their, their code.
Quite all right. I got those. Thanks.
Um, and, and I just had just more like suggestions and, and that is, uh, first of all, I want to say thank you. Um, these reports have been so long overdue. And, um, uh, it just really helps me to have a lot of hope for the future as we, you know, move forward. Uh, I'd like to see with the, to have a transparent advisory group, however that works best. And I'm, I don't, don't know what that one will be, but I just think it needs to be really transparent. And the second thing with the RIPA, uh, data, um, again, thank you for that one. Cause I remember asking for it many times and it wasn't, um, that information wasn't given until it was required by the state, but I know you were working on it regardless of that. So, um, but my, uh, uh, suggestion on the report is that the next time one is done, is it to include an analysis so that we can better understand, uh, what, what the data is really telling us? And, and then it'll make it simpler for us to, to see any trends. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I am seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So, um, these are informational items and no action, um, is, or will be taken. I did want to allow, um, our police chief, um, Dave Norris an opportunity. I know that the RIPA data sometimes raises more questions than answers. And so, um, what steps does the department plan on taking? Um, I know that kind of being curious, being open to digging and, and finding out and how is that going to, process going to unfold and how is the community going to be involved? And then thoughts about the advisory commission?
Uh, so first, I really appreciate the questions that were brought up. Uh, I think they are, they all represent some important pieces and important questions here that we're, that we're talking about. I, I want to try and take them somewhat, somewhat in order. And I think the, one of the first questions I, and I appreciate, um, Ms. Levin's comment about us, you know, pursuing some type of, uh, some type of mental health response, mental health related response. And we're going to continue to, to focus on that. And, you know, whether we get this money from the county or whether we find another creative way, we're, we're committed to figuring out an alternative for that. Um, that, uh, that suits both our officers on the street and, uh, and the folks that are in need of help. The, uh, in, in terms of the, the race ethnicity breakdown that is in the RIPA data. And I'll just take a quick step back from that because I know, um, Ms. Jones was asking about, you know, adding some analysis. And I want to be very clear about why we did not add analysis into this report. I felt that it was very important that you see the data and then you being the public, see the data as the data without any interpretation coming from the police department or any sense of editorialization that was coming from PD. Uh, we wanted you to see that as, as close to raw data as, as you could get it. And that's why it's presented in the form that it's in. Um, that said, you know, we have looked at a couple of things and, you know, yes, we noticed that if you look directly at the, the local city demographics and you lay that up against our RIPA data, uh, there are some marked differences between those two things. Anything like that is a place for us to dig in with our curiosity and try and see if there are some lessons learned and some things to be determined from that. And so we're certainly going to be looking into that and seeing if there are some lessons learned or some, or some, something about that data that will inform how we police. Um, but I will also say kind of to balance that, we just received, uh, recently the report from the, the RIPA Board, the State Board, uh, that analyzes, they, they take it uh, a year at a time. And so their 2023 report that they just published actually analyzes 2021 data. So that's not Menlo Park PD reported data, right? That's the year before we reported. But they analyzed 3.1 million stops. And within a percentage point or three. And within a percentage point or three, we are our race ethnicity breakdown for the for the stops that are being done in Menlo Park are almost identical to the three point one million stops that are being done statewide. So there may be trends that are much broader policing trends, statewide trends that we have to look at as well. So we're going to be we're going to be looking at all of that as we examine that. And one of the things that I know Ms. Levin brought up the idea of of comparing the stop data broken down by race ethnicity to the local demographics and even the county demographics. And I appreciate because that's a very common approach that's been taken. And so one of the things that I wanted to look at, and it's research that's separate from the from the RIPA data, but I think it's important research to bring up, is we looked at twenty-seven thousand traffic stops that we did over the past five years. Eighty-three percent of those traffic stops are are made on people who are non-residents of Menlo Park. So only about seventeen percent of the stops that we make are actually Red Menlo Park residents. And so I think we just need to have a sense of balance and a sense of caution when we look at the the breakdown, because comparing it directly to our our demographics locally here in Menlo Park, I think could potentially be an apples to oranges type comparison. So I think we want to be very careful about how we look at that data. And as a matter of fact, I'm having those discussions on a national level with with folks about how how we best find a good set of comparative data to look at with our stop data, because stop data really is unique. It doesn't necessarily represent the entire population of the city. So, you know, those are things that we are going to be looking at. With regard to the advisory group, one of the conclusions that we came to in discussion within our subcommittee that I think is an important place to start exploring is to start with a non-Brown Act Advisory Group that is transparent to Ms. Jones's point that is very transparent, that provides information back to the community about what we're looking into and what we're talking about, and see if that is satisfactory to the to the cause. If it looks like that's that's not heading in the direction or not providing the the amount of of analysis or review that we need as a city, then we should have a secondary conversation and see if there are other means that we could use to do that. But I'm fairly confident that, you know, finding a good cross section of our community and having them actively participate in conversations about policing in this community, I think will be a really great start for us. And, you know, my assurance to the council is that that will be something that we will be as transparent as possible with with what we're talking about in those groups and any any questions that are being asked and any any opinions that are being rendered as part of that group. So we're looking forward to bringing that forward with you. The RIPA data itself will become an addendum to our quarterly reporting. We created the report that you saw submitted tonight as as a template so that we can then turn around and quarterly, we could just add that to our quarterly report and provide you with more frequent updates on that on that data. The reporting requirement that we have is to give all of our data to DOJ by April 1 of the year after we collected that data. We actually do that on a monthly basis. And so we'll be able to put that put that data together, package it up. And now we have a nice template that we can bring back to you so that we can explore some of these questions. So those those are the initial answers I have for you. I know that's just one council member asking questions, so I'll open it up to any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Just following up then. I really appreciate how you just gave us the data. So that didn't there was no story trying to be spun or anything. Will there be future conversations with the community about how to think about this, how the community might be approaching it? Are those?
Yeah, essentially, yes. I think that that what we want to do is we want to and keeping in mind that 2022 is the very first year that we have that we've put this data out. So this is really a baseline for us. And we've learned a ton over this over this past year's data and really so much more in the last couple of weeks as we've been able to look at it with sort of a ten thousand foot view, if you will, looking at all of that data, all seven thousand one hundred and some stops as a as a sum. And looking at, you know, are there some training issues with how we collect data so that we can make it more efficient? We can make it more accurate. We're we're learning by leaps and bounds with this. So as we start to, you know, take this in smaller bites and and can ask, you know, really good questions about it, there will be opportunities for us to have further discussions on that. I just want to make sure that we're that we're we're being really thorough and methodical about our approach.
Thank you, Chief. Vice Mayor Taylor, having been on the subcommittee with us, is there anything else you want to say?
At the moment, no, Vice Mayor Willison. Thank you.
Thank you. And real fast before I turn over to see if my colleagues have questions. I just want to again thank Chief Norris. I did sixty-four meetings was a lot. And we went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth on a lot like the advisory body versus was a topic I think we discussed probably sixty-three times. So this is, you know, this is a marathon. We want it to be a sprint. We want to be as great as we can as quickly as we can. But this is real work that's being done. And so we have to be really thoughtful about it. So thank you for being part of that journey with us, Chief Norris. Councilmember Nash or Councilmember Dorr, any comments, questions about any of the info items particularly policing? Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I just want to check on process because I know we asked for public comment and there was response to that. Can this be on any of the public comment items? Okay, great. Okay. I really appreciate this report and seeing the transparency is really, really helpful. Some things on thinking about comparative data. I did a quick search and there's something called the Bay Area Equity Atlas, and that shows the nine different counties. And it shows the racial breakdown of communities and the comparison with Menlo Park. Kind of echoing what one of our speakers, Adina Lovett, shared, that also didn't look great in in that comparison either. So even from the city, from the county, from the nine county area, those numbers don't look good. And I'm I guess glad to hear that it's about about the same as the state, but I think that there's so much more we can do. And I know that you are thinking deeply about how 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 these issues are showing up in our policing. And I appreciate the accountability that you're building with the community at at whole. And I'm excited for those continued conversations. And for me, it doesn't matter that eighty-three percent of those stops are not Menlo Park residents. They are they are still neighbors in some sense or another. And thinking about how how those things are connected is important. And another note, actually coming back to our conversation earlier about strategies for safe streets. The data shows the time of day, it shows who, it shows what, it doesn't show where. And so something that I am thinking about is if the vast, vast majority of these stops are traffic related. Those seems like there seemed like other opportunities there with public works to think about. Are there opportunities to within our public works create systems so police time can be spent doing other things other than traffic stops? So that's something I'm excited to hear and see more about as well.
So a couple of quick things to that. So if you notice, I actually hyperlinked in my report to that nine Bay Area County demographic spread. So I wanted I want us to be very open about, you know, how those things compare. And and we do need to, you know, find out what type of lessons there are to be learned from that. It may actually be related to, you know, multiple different pieces within this data as well. You know, we've seen some real trends in terms of time of day, days of the week that we're making these stops. And then you had a question about location, and I know I believe it was Adina Levin that asked the question about location also. So one of the things that we're working on is, you know, creating a dashboard that provides that information in a little bit more of an illustrative way. We already have an open data portal where you can actually pull all of that information much, much broader than our RIPA data. And and look at the locations of traffic stops plotted out over a period of time. Working with with ArcGIS and with Lloyd, as well as with with Tracy Weber, who does our dispatching records and pulls all those things into our reporting systems to give a better illustration of what that looks like. Because those are things that I want to explore also. What I want to look at is, you know, what are we doing that are officer initiated activities versus calls for response? What do traffic stops look like compared to accident locations or crash locations rather within the city? These are things that that we want to be able to bring to you and illustrate to you. And that's that is an open and active project with us to try and bring you back a dashboard that's a lot easier to to work with than just giving you an enormous lump sum of data and just saying, hey, figure it out. We don't want to do that. We want to provide provide something that has a little bit more of a visual appeal to to the community.
Councilmember Nash?
So I just I wanted to make a note on the H3, the Annual City Council Priority and Goal Setting Workshop. And just to highlight that organizational effectiveness is extremely important as well. I think all of us, if we had more dots, would that would have gotten some votes as well. And just want to highlight that that is something hopefully we can do is along with some of the other priorities, just sort of in concert with it. Thank you. And then I wanted to have a call out to City Clerk Heron and the City Attorney's Office and the PRAs. I thought it was really helpful to see the the Public Records Act internal procedures. And also note how much staff time and work goes into it. It's it was illuminating.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. And I just wanted to to follow up on a on a question. It was actually helpful just to listen to not just the public comments, but also City Council members discuss the the information about the RIPA data and also the reimagining public safety. Because we have not reported out in quite some time, for me, it was important to hear other folks' thoughts and concerns as opposed to sharing mine. The only question that has actually come up for me, and this might be in the report, and I just missed it. But is is it required through the RIPA data to share where the stops are, since I've heard that come up three times? And I'm sorry, Chief Norris, that I'm I'm not there, but I'm actually asking you.
Perfectly fine. And I appreciate the question. It is actually not a required part of the RIPA data. And I and I think that's because what the state is collecting is an objective set of data. And I think that if you had to drill down to each individual jurisdiction and try to you know, analyze it in terms of location data across each jurisdiction, you'd be way over your skis. But that doesn't mean that we don't collect that data. We do collect the locations of all of our stops. There's just not necessarily perfectly collated with that RIPA data itself. So we can still look at all the traffic stops, pedestrian stops, et cetera, and look at the locations and and find where they are on the map. And typically, you know, you see in the RIPA data that everything kind of leans very traffic oriented, right? The the high frequency of stops is the commute times usually during weekdays. And you you see the same type of location data when it comes to traffic stops as well. Most of the commute corridors are where you see the majority of that of that stop data or the stop locations rather, as well as like downtown area areas of high traffic and and high frequency travel. So but all of that is available, and we're looking for ways to make that more visible to you, but it is not part of the RIPA data itself.
Thank you. And is it is it possible just to include that in the next report?
I think what I would like to do is I would love to bring you that data kind of separately because I would like to keep those two things distinctly separate because one, we're reporting to DOJ and one is data that we collect here. But happy to bring both of those things forward in, you know, either in a quarterly report, or if you were looking for it as an informational item to just discuss kind of what the what the general geographic spread is of our of our stops. Happy to do something along those lines.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. And and Mayor Willison, are we still on informational items?
We are.
Okay, so I had a comment about actually H3. And I just realized that Councilmember Combs isn't here. So I will I'll bring this up now and then bring it up at our next meeting. But I'm actually hoping that through the council priorities that well, my request is that we look at the norms and and actually adopt them as a council. And and I'm not sure when that would happen, how that would happen, but that is one of my requests.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. I I've started keeping a whiteboard with kind of policies and procedure items. And in big letters, it says norms. So those are things that City Manager Murphy and I, and maybe you can join into, kind of have to discuss kind of literally as we get through the storms and everything. So thank you, though, for for highlighting that. Anything else, Vice Mayor Taylor?
On the informational items. And there was one part that I I will bring up, and I it is likely not to happen because today is March twenty-eighth. But the county is accepting grant applications for Measure K funds. And it is due on March thirty-first. One is specific, at least the email I saw was specific to District Two for the county, or it would have to be a citywide serve the city. I'm sorry, serve the county of San Mateo. But I'm just putting that out there because there was discussion about the mental health response and applying for a grant. So at any rate, that was my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So if there are no further comments or questions on the informational items, we are now moving on to I, City Manager's Report. So City Manager Murphy, how are you doing?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm doing doing great. It's a we do take each week or day at a time, and especially as with storm forecasts. So I'm thankful that winds weren't as as high as projected, not as much rain as projected. So but we were were prepared. But thankful that impacts aren't tremendous, but there are still indeed impacts, you know, learned of another tree down impacting a house. So there's, you know, some some people that are impacted by that tonight. There was some very minimal power outages today. So there's still still real real impacts that come come from what we're experiencing, but thankful it's not not to the extent that we've experienced over the previous storms. So the the two things I'd like to just notice is the that next week's council meeting on April fourth will be located the Bell Haven Branch Library. So it will be a in-person meeting with remote participation from the public possible. We do believe that we're we've we've run some other commission meetings from that location. So we I think we've got the technology down for that. And we'll we'll be testing it out the day of and everything. Make sure we're ready to go, but we're excited about being able to hold a council meeting in the Bell Haven neighborhood. It's been a tradition over the years. We're happy to be able to do that again this year. And the second thing is just an announcement that we do have a request for proposal out for services related to our administration of our below market rate housing program. And so that was launched a few days ago and is open for next couple of weeks. And so we're looking forward to getting proposals for that that service. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. I'm just following up on that last RFP report. Is House Keys currently our BMR provider?
Yes, House Keys is the current provider, and they could compete for the for the proposal. But we did kind of issue a new RFP to to see what the marketplace has.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we are on J, which is City Council Member Reports. Any City Council Member Reports? Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, Bosca, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, had our meeting on March sixteenth where we talked about our water resources. And we had the good news from Governor Newsom that with all this rain, we are able to ease drought restrictions some, which is great news for our reservoirs and for our communities. But that still just means that the reservoirs are expected to deliver seventy-five percent of requested water supplies. So part of our state is still in a drought, which kind of signals just how bad the drought had been. And And so the and also the the little blessing of the water is that. It is helping our state. And that's all.
Thank you. I see Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. My report out is that the SBW May. Meeting Retreat that was supposed to happen on March twenty-third was actually canceled. Cancelled due to the power outages. We were supposed to have the retreat at Kenyatta College. It looks like the next opportunity will be in May, hopefully of this year. I also have another, what's not a report out, it's actually a request. And is that possible to do now unless there's another? Sub report out from any council member.
This is a request to have an item agendized or or this is a? I speak, speak freely, then we'll figure out what to do with what you're saying.
Thank you. And I believe we all, we all saw this email. It's an email from a commissioner with a request. And the request is to discuss that commissioners receive a stipend. For their volunteer work. I believe this falls under not just the category of of compensation, but also equity. So it would be great if we take up this discussion prior to budgeting, because I believe it's a budgeting issue. And it wasn't necessarily a priorities issue, even though it's important to all of us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So I'm going to ask. I ask this every time someone wants to have a fun item. What do we do with this? And how do we go about deciding where to discuss it, when to discuss it?
Uh, let's see. So I can take the the first stab that based off the last time I think that we received a request at the. Council meeting like this, then the next step would be to actually. Put it on the agenda for the council to discuss whether or not they would like to agendize it for a future meeting. So it'd be, it's a multi-step process. So we we can follow that if that's. As long as there's, say, one other council council member. Wanting to do that in addition to Vice Mayor Taylor, then then it would be scheduled for an upcoming. Council agenda for a future discussion.
Just to clarify, so the resources expended at this point would not be the development of a staff report. Ahead. It'd be a little baby staff report that just lists the four options we have at that meeting. Okay, I I'm comfortable with that. And I'm seeing a nod from Councilmember Door and from Councilmember Nash. Yes.
Thank you. My my only other request is that if we could put a timestamp on it, I make this a. Fifteen-minute discussion. I don't want this to, I know that our meetings are are pretty. Full. So I just wanted to make sure that we talk about it. We we put a timestamp on it. It's a fifteen-minute or less discussion. And I just say that just to respect people's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. I'll follow up with the city manager on, but I but I believe the conversation would be limited to. Whether or not we're actually going to dedicate staff resources and time to it. So I think by design, it's a limited conversation. But thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. As so, Councilmember Nash.
So I have two report outs. One is. Last week, Peninsula Clean Energy Board of Directors met in person for the first time since March twenty-twenty, which was very exciting. And in that meeting, we learned that PCE Peninsula Clean Energy broke a hundred. Appliance incentive application rebate applications in a month, which is the first time it's done so. And just so people know, there's been a number of changes that have been made to the program. It was previously for just for. Uh, heat pump water heaters and now there's increased incentives. They've added heat pump HVAC systems. We've added zero percent loans and the option to receive rebates without going through the regional Bayren program. Which had been something that people had been asking for. And so there's been a very rapid uptake in the program and multiple contractors are signing up each week. So hopefully that means we will have more people available to put in. Electric appliances for those people who are choosing to do that. And about two-thirds of the applications are for the HVAC systems and the balance are for the heat pump water heaters. And about ten percent of those applications actually include a panel upgrade, which is also something that you can get a. Additional rebate for. And then the second. Item that I wanted to report out on was from today. I attended the Haywire scenario, which are exercises that explore impacts of a magnitude seven point O earthquake. On the Hayward Fault centered near Oakland and its aft aftershocks. And it emphasizes the variety of physical. Technological and societal impacts associated with the multiple hazards and cascading impacts of such an event. And there were a number of city staff present. In addition, Public Works had Joanna Chen. Whitlow, Whit Lloyd attended from IT, the GIS. From Library Community Services was Ashley Walker. And the Police Department had two people. Chief Norris was there as as well as Sergeant Scott McAdams. So we had a really good showing there and it was very worthwhile. Three and a half hours. So, thank you.
Thank you for attending that, Councilmember Nash. So my updates are. At the same time as the local policymaker group for Caltrain last week, there was a Quiet Zone. Community meeting at Ariaga that was very well attended. For those community members who are interested in finding out what's going on with the Quiet Zone, there is now information posted to the city's website. That contains the presentation and a video from that meeting and a lot of good information. And so I look forward to that coming to council. As kind of wearing my mayor hat. The, I had a meeting with our new Chamber of Commerce, the San Mateo County Chamber of Commerce. Amy Buckmaster is the director there. They have a lot of, you know, great energy and I'm looking forward to seeing what the new chamber brings. I'm actually meeting with City Manager Murphy and a downtown business. Stakeholder tomorrow with the new chamber. So they're they're starting to engage in our community. Also, as mayor this week, it was kind of like a blood sweat and or last week, I had both blood and sweat given. I planted a tree. I don't think I sweat that much. It was really just two shovelfuls. And I gave blood to the Stanford Blood Center and I want to encourage, it's always blood and sweat. I don't think I cried for the city last week, but I I might have. But regarding the blood, I want to encourage all residents that there's still indeed is a blood shortage. The the blood that our community members give is vital to Stanford and the Children's Hospital. And they also supply other hospitals. So it was really painless, very easy, got lots of cookies. They were so. Nice there. So if you're, you don't need to go to a spa or whatever, go to the Stanford Blood Center. You get to sit in a fabulous chair and be treated really well. So please do that. And later, next week. The city manager and Vice Mayor Taylor and I are going to be meeting at the Tri-Mayor. Meeting, also Tri-Mayor Tournament with East Palo Alto and Palo Alto. So that'll be an ongoing group that's going to meet to discuss our common concerns and topics. So lots going on. Thank you, council, for your updates. And I think with that, at ten oh four, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.